Okay. Thank everybody for coming today to our regular council meeting here in November. Can we have the roll call, please?
Certainly, we'll just note for the record that Councilmember Holland is absent. Councilmember DeGolia, Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hawkins-Manwellian.
Here.
And Mayor Whitmer.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Uh, our first part of the meeting is.
Pledge of Allegiance.
It doesn't say that here. We'll do the pledge of allegiance.
That one's yours.
Yeah. Yeah.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Goodbye, United States of America, and to the Republic or which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Oh, yeah, sorry. Okay, do we have any public comments? Oh, no, wait a second. We're going to have a presentation from the library, their annual report.
If you have trouble getting it up, I'll just put up the PDF and then we'll go with that.
It does say pledge. George didn't put it in his little thing here. Sorry. I apologize.
There it is. That's what I was looking for. The.
Yeah, that was in the box, she said.
Yeah.
Okay, we're ready. And thank you for giving us copies of the packet in advance. It was in everybody's box in case you didn't see it.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
Well, good evening, Mayor Whitmore, Whitmer, and members of City Council. I am Tamika Price, the manager of the Atherton Library. I am pleased to present the library's annual report for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Please bear with me. Each of our thirteen libraries is unique, but also part, also part of a larger family of offering transformative experiences in a single mission to strengthen our community by creating an inclusive sense of place and environment of learning. First established as a county-free library in nineteen twelve, the library Joint Powers of Authority was formed in nineteen ninety-nine. Covering three hundred and fifty-one square miles, our service area is comprised of our eleven member cities and the non-incorporated areas of the county. San Mateo County Libraries is uniquely positioned to see the broader county service area while at the same time understanding each community we serve. The unique diversity and complexity of those we serve inspire and drive our services. Our staff, staff's diversity mirrors the community we serve, helping us incorporate the wisdom of varied lives, experiences to better offer inclusive resources, meaningful services, and engaging events. Our goal is to reflect our community by providing valuable time, space, and tools they need to feel represented and ready to explore. San Mateo County Libraries provides unmatched services to our community, and we are consistently ranked as one of the best libraries in the nation. Feedback from the community influences our work and strengthens our resolve to provide enlightening, exciting, and extensional services. San Mateo County Libraries continue to be a high-performing organization. Some standout statistics include our one point five million library visitors, or visits, which is a fifty-six percent increase over last year. Two point three million items circulated this past year, which is a six percent increase in checkout for the year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. In our overall, we saw over two hundred and fifty, two hundred and forty-five thousand, uh, we provided over two hundred and forty-five thousand programs. And we, excuse me. The programming that we provided this past year, we saw over two hundred and forty-five thousand in attendance, and this is throughout all our libraries. This is an increase of a hundred and twenty-six percent from the previous year. More people are participating in our programs, visiting our locations, and checking out our eclectic, uh, collection of materials. Here are a few highlights. This year, we saw an impressive four point three million of our Wi-Fi hotspot sessions, or people used our hotspots or our Wi-Fi within or around our buildings. We served over forty thousand nourishing meals and checked out laptops over twenty-eight thousand times this past year. The following charts summarize totals for Atherton Library through year-end for key library services. With a full year in the new building, Atherton Library has seen strong increase in all our measures year over year. Visitors, physical circulation, digital downloads on overdrive have all exceeded historical levels. And programming numbers have increased substantially as well. Atherton Library welcomed over fifty-six thousand visitors this past year, providing over three hundred programs with over eighty-four hundred attendees. Staff participated in eight engagements outside the library branch to connect with six hundred and five people. In the fiscal year, we saw over forty-eight thousand of our items be checked out from within the branch. And this is an increase of two hundred and twenty percent for this, for Atherton Library. Our continued community, or excuse me, our incredible community continues to re-energize us, taking our innovation to new heights. This year, we introduced new programs and initiatives that many in our community met with gratitude and celebration. I'm excited to share a few of our significant achievements featured in this report. This March, we celebrated the first anniversary of our expanded seven days, uh, service week for over a total of thirty-six thousand hours of service for, throughout all of our branches. Expanded evenings and weekend hours also provided more in-person opportunities for discovery and support through access to the latest technology, programming, and school and job resources that met many interests. Additional hours are critical in expanding equitable access to people who work multiple jobs and have non-traditional schedules or attend school. Our brand-new Maker Mobile hit the road this summer, taking maker activities and tech to new horizons. The Maker Mobile is a zero-emission, custom-built vehicle that delivers high-impact maker programs beyond our library buildings. Having the vehicle means we can take state-of-the-art tech to more people and meet them where they are. Residents who may have never experienced technology like three D printing or laser cutting now have access to these initiatives. Power Up Afternoons offer grades K through twelve, um, opportunities to connect and grow with after-school experiences. This discovery and learning-filled afternoon have strengthened our connections with local students and families. Power Up Afternoon has reached thousands of kids. Participants enjoyed twenty-two, over twenty-two hundred hours of programming in which creativity and learning were enjoyed. Ninety-seven percent said that they enjoyed the experience at the library. We also have the Big Lift Inspiring Summer Programs created to prevent summer loss. Uh, this learning can happen over summer breaks. It continues to be an impact in the lives of young residents and their families. Through the generous support of County Measure K Funds, the program serves nine hundred and sixty students, served nine hundred and sixty students this past year. And those students have been shown to, uh, show academic improvement. Language is a power, and being able to read in your preferred language is invaluable. Through the addition of twenty-nine thousand world language items, our communities now have more opportunities to experience linguistic diversity than ever before. We now include more Chinese, Hindi, Japanese, Korean, Russian, Tagala, and Spanish, um, materials to represent those voices within our communities. As part of our commitment to providing equitable access to materials for all, ensuring community members feel seen and supported. Supplies like pads and tampons are as necessary as toilet paper. And so, if they are not readily available, accessible, or affordable, we believe that physical needs shouldn't keep anyone from using our library, so we decided to take action. By offering free menstrual products in our, all our libraries, anyone in need can get these necessary resources and continue to use our service. This year, we launched mental health first aid training to continue supporting communities. Mental Health First Aid is an initiative making training available to empower community members to respond and provide initial help and support to someone experiencing a mental health crisis. The training has given our public service staff additional expertise to help someone in need as well. In collaboration with several partner or agencies, we are now providing direct service to patrons inside our libraries. They are better connected with residents, or better able to connect residents with unemployment resources, low-income housing, as well as food assistance and other safety net programs and services. We joyfully welcome the return of in-person volunteers this year, enthusiastically volunteer, enthusiastic volunteers, friends of the library, and foundation members. Have generously devoted thousands of hours of their time. Their hours of service are extension, existential to advancing important equity goals, whether signing up to tutor an adult or contributing, uh, language skills. Our library champions are our most important organization. And I have a video to show. That works for me. Okay. And last. Okay. I just would like to thank you all, including Mayor Whitmer. You've been helping us and assisting us with story time. You've provided several hours over the last few months, um, engaging engaging with the staff as well as the youth, the children, um, through sing-alongs and reading stories. Also Rick, for your work on the Joint Powers of Authority, um, Council, and George as well. Thank you all again for welcoming this evening to share our annual report.
Well, thanks. Thanks for being here and and hopefully, if anybody in the audience or online has not been to our library or taken a class there in the Makers Lab or come to one of the other sessions there, I strongly encourage you to do that. Our library is fantastic. And, um, you know, and, and, and there's some, someplace for everyone as well as something for everyone to do. If you would like to volunteer, library would be very, very happy to have your help. Um, you know, you just have to coordinate with them. The staff there is great. I appreciate it. Thank you, Tamika, for coming. And thank you for, um, you know, sharing all that and hopefully that movie will be available to us. Maybe even on the, on the website for everybody to view. So, thanks. Any other question or comments from staff members or, or, uh, council members? No. Okay. So, thank you. Uh, now we'll move to, um, public comments. Public comments should be kept to three minutes or less. And public comments need to be about items that the town actually has some jurisdiction over. Okay, so we'll go with that. And here is.
Like to make.
Fiona from.
Hi, I'd like to make a request to take item ten out of order.
I thought you said you didn't want it out of order. I got your letter. It said that you don't want to take it out of order. You changed your mind.
Right, yeah, is that all right?
Uh, yeah, so, um, so next to last item on the student group. Um, they would like to bring that forward, perhaps, uh, after our consent agenda. Is that okay? Is everybody agreeable to that?
This is which item? Item number thirteen, twelve?
A youth council item. Should be out in ten.
Ten.
Okay.
Okay. Short one.
After seven. After the consent.
Okay. All right, no problem. Okay, so now, public comments. Anybody have a public comment about something that the town can do something about? It can be about something that's on this agenda or not on this agenda, um, but might be on a future agenda. Any public comments in the room? Are there any public comments online? Seeing no public comments, we'll close public comments for the time period. Move on to departmental written reports, which are very informative if the public would take time and wanted to take the time to go look. Um, on a monthly basis, Georgia's staff puts out a report on what they've done that month, as well as reports on how many permits we're doing per year and how much, uh, revenue we're collecting, et cetera. So, um, though, are there any public comments or questions on the departmental reports from the, from the council?
I just make a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, it really is, um, the, all, staff works really hard to put these agenda packets together. And their reports over the years just keep getting better and better with more graphics, easier to read, yeah, a lot of good information. So I do encourage everyone, all the public, because you really learn a lot about what they're doing on a day-to-day basis, on a monthly basis. So I just want to say kudos to the staff for doing that. Thank you, George, for your leadership in that.
Did anybody in the audience, uh, get a chance? Excuse me? Oh, Rick, you have a comment? Go ahead.
I have a question, uh, for other members of the council. Uh, if you notice in our staff report, we get, um, a number of reports relating to construction and permit summary, and I'm sure we all look at those, uh, the numbers change every month. And, uh, I had this question for you. So I, every time I look at these, I have a difficulty because I can't foot the numbers from one, uh, from one page to the other because the numbers that are the, uh, financial numbers under the construction and permit summary, which we've seen for years. This is, this is the, the, the summary we always see. It's based on fiscal year because it's, 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 and the numbers are financial and they relate to our fiscal year. And then we go to the summaries that we've asked staff to prepare for us, which I think are incredibly helpful. Uh, the summary of the number of ADUs that are entitled permitted and final and, um, the number of single-family residences that are, uh, permitted each year. And those are calendar year-based. So when I look at the numbers and I try to, you know, whenever I look at numbers, I try to make sure there's accuracy in those numbers. And the only way you can do that is to line items up and see that they're the same, but because these are fiscal year compared to calendar years, it's not possible to do that. So we don't have to make a decision tonight, but I wanted to highlight it for everyone to look at.
Yeah.
Because it would be more comfortable for me if they were the same. And I, I think we can't change the, uh, financially-based numbers than the table that we've seen for years, which would require the other table to be a fiscal year table, which the staff could do. They use this table to report to HCD.
Right.
On their annual reports, which are required to be calendar year. But for our review purposes, we can look at it based on fiscal year. The numbers are all same. They're just organized differently. So my preference would be to have the same methodology so we can compare.
My response is I don't have a problem with that because intellectually I know, you know, they're calendarizing. It's on an annualized basis. How many ADUs? How much, how many permits are we doing on an annual basis? And the, you know, the fiscal numbers are just July to June.
Yeah, they're just different. You can't compare them.
Right, so.
Go ahead.
I just don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem with it because the calendar year numbers allow you to look back and see, are we on track with previous years? You know, and kind of gives you the trend. However, you know, I think staff could probably do something to improve it to everybody. So.
Yeah.
So why don't we give George, uh,
Another task.
A task to, uh, come up with something and then review it with us in our one-on-ones and so we can get everybody's input on. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. Are there any comments on this from the, from the people in the audience or online? Seeing none, we'll close that. Um, we don't really approve the reports. They're just discussion.
So we didn't do the disclosure of ex parte communications.
Believe that that comes now.
Um, okay.
Okay.
That was before.
Uh, so before we get into the overall agenda, if there's been any ex parte communications, uh, please disclose them at this point in time.
Uh, I've had conversations with various residents about housing matters, and we've got housing matters on the agenda. They didn't relate to the specific items on the agenda, but they related to housing issues in general.
You?
Nope.
I haven't any, had any since I disclosed what I disclosed at the last meeting.
Right, yeah, but not this meeting.
And you?
Nope.
Okay, uh, I did go to the public meeting that was on Monday, and I did make a comment at that meeting. Yes, there were no other council members there, so that was it. Okay. Uh, now we go to the consent calendar. The consent calendar is items one through seven, which, uh, includes approval of minutes, bills and claims, treasurer's report, et cetera. Does any council member want to pull any of those items?
I, I have a comment and I, I guess I'll just pull item six.
Okay, item six, which is meeting protocol, which we discussed at length last time. Uh, are there any people in the audience that want to pull anything? Is the member that's up for reelection on the vector control district here? Did you want to say anything?
I'll give you a few words. I'll make it short and sweet. I have been with the, uh, I was first appointed by you about nine years ago. I've been there. I've been chairman of the finance committee for the last six years, and I'm going to be the board president and president starting January first of twenty twenty-four. Uh, the district is in fabulous shape. We had a half a mil cash flow at the end of June thirtieth. We have nine million in reserves. Uh, we're well-funded. We're building another building for our storage, uh, equipment across the street. And most importantly, we don't have any major mosquito problems. Last year, we've had no West Nile, West Nile virus, Zika, or malaria, or anything else. So I'll make it short and sweet. Any questions? Let me know.
I'll see you.
There shouldn't be any questions because things are running smooth.
Thank you for your service. I'm glad you've been elected president.
Yeah, well, thank you very much.
Your guys are very, very responsive. You put in a call. There are WASPs that are in the ground.
Yep.
Your guy comes out that day.
Yeah, we have a guy, uh, Evan in our city takes care of us. So any questions, you can always call.
Day if you, if you need it again.
Right, okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
See you maybe another four years.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
So, um, with no comments other than the one, would you like to talk about yours before we vote on the consent calendar?
I, I can bring up, I, I, I'd like, uh, an interpretation, uh, made on six, which the, uh, direction in the staff report is that, uh, based on state law, it's necessary to provide a warning to someone who is interrupting a meeting with hate speech or going on an issue that is outside of the, uh, subject matter jurisdiction of the council. And, um, I don't have any problem with that providing a warning, but I want to be clear. I would like us to agree that the warning will be provided in writing in the, um, material for every meeting. And that if, in fact, we get a Zoom bomber online that is, uh, using hate speech, uh, that, uh, I don't, I don't want to warn that person and let them continue online. I want to take them offline as, as we have done in the past.
I think that was the general feeling last time we talked about this.
That's true.
There, there was, that was, might have been the general feeling, but I think there was a comment from the city attorney the last time that we're required to give a warning before we remove them from the meeting or we, or eliminate their comments. Uh, perhaps Andreas can elucidate a bit further.
And I'm not challenging that. I'm just, uh, saying we should interpret that so that we give the warning in writing rather than allow the person to continue in the meeting.
As part of the, as part of the staff report, I think he's saying. Yes.
I, I, I know in other, uh, situations, like at the C-Kag board meetings, they're doing it, uh, both. They're putting it in, uh, writing in like the, uh, agenda packet as well as, um, the, uh, clerk will read a paragraph, uh, before the meeting that if any, uh, interruption or misbehavior occurs during this meeting, then there's, uh, that, uh, the clerk has the right to cut them off and, you know, kind of sets the stage. And I don't see that, that we have that paragraph, uh, written, uh.
There's a, there's a paragraph in the staff report that would go under the public comment section that does advertise about a warning being given.
Yeah.
But it, it's, the way it's read in the staff report, it would be on the agenda, is if there is such speech, you'll be issued a warning. Uh, but it doesn't say that we will cut your, cut your communication off.
Right.
And I think that's what.
I think in order to be able to cut them off, you have to tell them that if they, uh, are doing inappropriate, um, speech or interrupting, that we have the right to cut them off. But I, I'd like to hear from the attorney on this.
Yeah, I agree. We should say that right away. Clerk should say that right away as we open up the meeting before we start any public comments, I think.
So we think the most conservative approach here would be to include the warning on the agenda and then to also provide a warning, as George just said, right, when the inappropriate comment is made before we cut them off. Now, that can all happen in a matter of seconds. So the warning would be from the city clerk or from the mayor jumping into that comment as a warning. Then if they continue on with their comment, then cut them off immediately.
I think that that's too long.
I think it's very problematic because the speaker or the interrupter could be over, very overriding and it'd be very hard for, um, any rational person to, you know, calmly say, we're giving you a warning.
Perhaps, maybe I can clear it up for the, the city attorney so that he can give a straight-up answer. So I think what's being requested is we provide a written warning in the agenda that hate speech or inappropriate speech will be cut off. And then if such speech does occur at any point in the meeting, the city clerk just terminates the speaker's microphone and/or they get removed from the meeting in some way if they're on. the city clerk just terminates the speaker's microphone and/or they get removed from the meeting in some way if they're on Zoom, uh, and that's it.
That's right. That's what we want.
Okay, I think I'm fine. Yes. As long as every meeting we're providing that warning, then I think we're covered.
Yeah, it's just the new protocol.
Okay. We can, we can revise the policy to do that.
With, with that change, I'll move acceptance of all the consent items, items one through seven.
I'll second that.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, there are no opposed, so we'll move on. That closes out the consent calendar. Um, as we start the public hearing. Can we have the uh, that earlier item go for?
Yeah, item number ten moved up on the agenda. So you, I can give a very brief staff report and then we can invite Fiona up as well.
So just kind of as an overview, uh, Ms. Lampres uh, wrote to me and said, you know, would it be possible for a group of high school students uh, get together and provide input or do volunteer projects and things like that for the city? We said yes. Um, but we don't want to make this a formal committee. Uh, because then it would be covered by the Brown Act, which could be very difficult for them. And so uh, we just want to acknowledge that they're doing it or, and ask them some questions if you'd like, okay? So.
Great. Good evening. My name is Fiona Lampres and I am a freshman at Sacred Heart. I am here today because we have come together and formed an Atherton Youth Advisory Group. You all have a copy of our charter, but just to summarize, we intend to represent the student body of Atherton, which is more than the number of residents in the town. We intend to foster community within the youth of Atherton, have a voter drive for young voters, provide a space to learn about local government and provide a forum for discussion of local policies affecting the youth of Atherton today. More specifically, we would like to bring back the beloved Easter egg hunt and have a debate next year for the candidates in Atherton's election, like the one that they have for the presidents. Here are our members.
Uh, my name's Sophie and I'm a freshman at Menlo. My name's Sydney and I'm a sophomore in Menlo.
Oh, my name's Audi and I'm a freshman at Crystal.
If you're taking the time to listen to us and we look forward to working together in the future. Any questions?
I do.
Yeah, go ahead.
Will you be getting service hours with your schools for this?
No.
Do you need to have an advisor or a professor from your school sign off on it? Or would it be a student club? Or how does it work on your side?
It would be a student group. Um, we do have an advisor. My dad, Mike Lampres, he used to be the mayor. He's been on city council for a while, no longer is, to advise us on any questions we have.
And how do you reach out, round to the other schools? I see there's nobody from M A here. Will you be reaching out to them too?
We have reached out to them. We are always welcome to have more members, but none have reached out yet.
Awesome.
Yeah, we have. Have you actively reached out to M A?
We have reached out, but we will be totally open to reaching out more or accepting any new members.
Yeah, we ask that they have at least two members from each, each high school.
We, I mean, the.
We, George and I.
Oh. I said, I haven't, you know, we didn't, but uh.
That is still the intent, but we just haven't had a lot of interest from some of the other schools, but everyone is connected to Atherton.
Okay. Any other questions?
So when you do the voter signup, will you go to all of the schools and have a vote of birth? Will you work with the League of Women Voters?
We.
Cause they can get you all the forms and stuff and help you, help you do that.
We'll definitely reach out, but we are planning to work directly with the schools.
Nice.
Okay.
I, well, I have a question. You mentioned the, the Easter egg hunt to kind of try to get that back. Um, that was uh, put on by the dames and uh, it was um, definitely a, a huge amount of work because I worked on it for many years and stuffed eggs and everything. And it was also a big financial uh, commitment that the dames you know, supported and made uh, that happen. So um, just, you know, in some of the ideas, uh, how would that be paid? How do you envision that being paid?
So I envision like fundraising for it and having like maybe paying for a ticket at the park or something. And then in terms of volunteers, we'd be reaching out to the schools because kids need service hours.
Oh, the kids would get service hours for that, I think. Oh, okay. Yeah.
Bill. So I, I think this is great. I think it's uh, it, it's really good to see the initiative that you're taking and uh, it's, I think, really important for us who are involved in city government to encourage those that aren't involved to find out about it and to be involved in any way that they can. So I'm really excited that all of you are doing this. I think it's great. Uh, and I, in reading your material and in your presentation that's in our, our council packet, the fact that kind of jumped out at me and hit me between the eyes was that there are nearly as many high school students in Atherton as there are registered voters in Atherton. I think that's a really big fact. And it's obviously a fact because of Menlo Atherton High School.
Yes.
So uh, I want to do everything that I can to really encourage you and push you to uh, actively reach out to M A, to give them the opportunity to be involved. And I think that if you're able to get in front of, I don't know how you do it, but you know how to do it, I think better than I know how to do it. And if, if you do it, I think you're going to find kids that want to be involved and they're, that are willing to be involved. And you know, there's been some recent controversy between Atherton and M A. So I think it's a really good thing to reach out to. I, I, I can't emphasize that enough.
Thank you. Yeah, we will. We have reached out, but we will continue to do so.
When they came to, to myself and George, we actively encouraged them to do something and get representation from everybody and talk to them about some of their projects and they understand if they do the Easter egg hunt, it's going to require more than just what they have.
I just, yeah.
Having worked with on Earth, Earth Day a few years, it was really hard to reach out to students at the very schools. And so I'm thrilled to have a student group that would then, one of the things I would like to see you guys do is be our conduit to go out. So we offered an Earth Day, an art program where we tried to reach kids to do works of art to display. And it was hard. I mean, we were able to do it, but having people who are at the schools would be phenomenal. So thank you. I think it's great.
Yeah, as in, as we stated in our charter, it is one of our purposes to serve as a conduit sort of between the council and the schools.
It's awesome.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate you taking the time to come and introduce yourself to everybody.
Very proud of you all.
All right.
Thank you.
Don't hesitate to come back on your own. You all, all don't have to come together. You can come and check us out at any time.
Come to our.
Like you can see, we, we encourage people to speak. So thank you.
Yeah, and, and Rick, as I mentioned to you, all of our committees invite the public to come. So for example, if you're interested in like we talked about environmental issues, the environmental programs committee meets, you go online, you can see when they meet and you're just a member of the public. You can speak at that meeting, but you hear what they're working on, et cetera. And all the committees are like that.
So Mayor, the Environmental Programs Committee is meeting tomorrow uh, from one to three.
Oh, that may be in school.
I understand. So I, maybe we can talk with um, our um, uh, environmental uh, liaison and maybe change those meeting times.
We'll see. All right. Okay, thanks. Thank you. Moving on, we have a lot to do today. You may stay or leave. We're not going to be insulted if you, if you go. Um, okay. Now, the first thing is consider amendments to the Atherton Municipal Code for dead or dangerous trees uh, as well as damage to what?
No, eight.
The A D U's.
Eight, sorry, sorry.
Number eight, let's see, A D U's.
Yeah. Well, okay, on the agenda here, says in.
I, I think the, I think the agenda's got them flipped, but in the packet's got them numbered differently.
Yeah, okay.
You can pick which one you want to go first. It's up to you.
Okay.
Oh, you're right. It's different on the agenda.
I know, and the numbers were wrong too, by the way, on the agenda. But, but anyway. I'm going on the agenda packet, so let's go with the.
Number nine first?
Number nine, it's labeled number eight. Yes. Trees. Sally. Brittany, Brittany and Sally.
Good evening, council members. Brittany Bendix, Town Planner. I'm going to give a brief summary of the staff report on the heritage tree ordinance changes as well as the changes to the guidelines. Uh, there are three items that staff would like to bring to your attention. The first is a change to the heritage tree ordinance that would align with the sidewalk improvement uh, changes that you had reviewed uh, previously this fall. And so it's just really cleanup text changes. The second is more significant and it is changing from a monthly reporting process for projects that are under construction where heritage trees must be monitored to a quarterly system. And then the third topic of conversation is asking the council what their preference is for how staff goes about updating the standards or guidelines document. And with that, I will turn it over to you for any questions, although I will acknowledge that we have our town arborist here who can happily get into the weeds with you on some of this. Thank you.
Uh, I have a question. Um, for every time this comes up, when, when Rick and I work with Sally, we kind of also looked at this and we didn't do anything or we forgot to, but as you have in this tree protection zone thing that you've given to us on our streets, an R one A tree is, is a T P Z of ten, could be negotiated down to eight and a R one B, which is a smaller lot, is T P Z of six times. And if it's the same tree, the same age, just on a different sized property, um, I, you know, the comments that we've made several times from, from up here on the dais is we don't understand why they're both not six and we think that they should be changed to six. I hear you're going to make a comment on it, so please feel free.
Yes, my name's Sally, the town arborist. Um, there's a few, few reasons why when we updated the ordinance, we um, put that one at six X. One, as you stated, because the lots are smaller and even in Atherton, the smaller lots have a lot of trees. So this is the only way to allow uh, development on the smaller lots. Um, it wasn't my preference to have the T P C at six X. Um, but this is a compromise we made to, to allow building on the R one B lots. I want to say that um, we never get any exceptions for the R one B lots. Um, I looked at the building permits today and this year we've uh, have about eight hundred and seventy building permits and out of those uh, staff exceptions have only been thirty-three and those are in the, those are in the R one As. So I've only received thirty-three applications out of eight hundred and seventy that wanted an exception down to eight times. Um, so we're talking about three and a half percent of applicants are asking for an exception to the ten times. Now for the six times, so when you're in R one B, you, it's ten times and then you ask for a staff exception down to eight times. But if you want less than eight times, you would go to the planning commission. And this year we've only had ten of those. So we're talking about very low numbers of, of um, applicants wanting to lessen the T P Z zone. Most people can comply with the T P Z zone. And I wanted to state that um, there are different standards usually for different zoning lots. So for different sizes, uh, lots in different zones, there's always different standards. So we're, we're, we're we're, we, I don't feel it would need to be an equal thing because we're talking about two different zoning sizes. And also, uh, the six, six X is the critical root zone. So if you wanted to have a standard of six X for both R one A and R one B, um, then there would be no um, exception, staff exceptions because it would be really hard for uh, somebody to apply for a staff exception lower than six X. But many will continue to apply, um, not because they don't have the luck of space, because it's just because people tend to apply for a lesser amount. So, uh, and that's not something that would, would be an arboricultural standard. So what I'm trying to say is at six X, the critical root zone, it'd be really hard to approve something less than six X because then you're dealing with the stability of the tree. Um, that's the area where, where you want to keep the roots for the stability of the tree, which is for personal safety. So there's a lot of reasons why we have the different TPZs for the different zonings.
Well, I, I still feel six X should be six X and, and uh, it would have been that way if I had caught it when Rick and I were working with you. I did put, tried to put it in then, but that way you can say six X and no exceptions. The other thing I hear from people is, you know, we went through a fair amount of time with these trees that have multiple trunks. And some trees have lots of multiple trunks that, yeah, if you add them all up, they add up to four and a half feet, but they may have more than what you're showing here. Here is showing four. Yeah, they may have up to eight. And they just think it's not, not appropriate.
I'm not aware of any case where um, we stopped the house from being built or an A D U for a multi trunk tree.
Well, I've heard from people that talked to me about it. Whether or not they talk to you is a different story. But, okay.
Chat to me and I can discuss it with them.
All right. Rick, did you have something?
Yeah. Uh, I actually have a question. Uh, the staff report says that uh, the subject of this item is to introduce and consider amendments to the Atherton Municipal Code, chapter eight point oh eight and chapter eight point ten. But what is provided and, and, and there are some references in the staff report to those specific sections, eight point oh eight and, uh, and, and eight point ten. But then what's provided to us is the draft ordinance doesn't identify eight point oh eight or eight ten anywhere. It only deals with seventeen point five two and so on. So I can't follow it.
Uh, attachment one is the draft ordinance changes for eight point oh eight and eight point one.
Oh, I understand that, but are we adopting the draft ordinance?
Yeah, the draft.
And it doesn't include eight point oh eight or eight ten?
It, it, it does. It says it in the title.
Because you're seeing, you're looking at seventeen, which is for the A D U.
Oh, that's the wrong one. Sorry, that's my error.
You have something else?
Wait, let me just look to make sure.
Well, while you're looking, can I?
I was looking at the wrong one, my error.
Go ahead.
I have a question about the intention of trying to match the trees to the sidewalk thing. And in there, there's a line that says about um, what I don't want to have happen is have that be an excuse for taking down trees if the roots are disrupting. Cause the wording says if it uh, it's, says something about blocking infrastructure. So I just want to make sure that we're not going to go in all those places where the it, the sidewalks buckle. I don't want it, it's to be an excuse to take down those trees.
It, it, it's not. It is uh, the town determination as to whether it's a hazard or an infrastructure issue.
And, and did I read it correct that the resident has to report it?
That's what the sidewalk ordinance and.
Okay, so do we then have, uh, will we also be policing that? So if we come and see a dead tree, will we also police in addition to them self proclaiming it?
Staff is driving around and Sally sees one.
So this will be.
Sees one. That's a dead or dying tree. Yes, they do uh.
But, but you're assuring me that this is not going to be used to cut down trees, roots that go under sidewalks.
That's correct.
But it's my understanding, I would still review it along with Public Works and we would see uh, the solution that we would be able to come up with first. This is just if it's a severe public hazard, then it, we just want something in an ordinance to say that we can ask the resident to remove the tree.
Oh, yeah, they take something down and they have to do a permit. Go ahead.
So I, I had a question about this also, uh, and that if, if it constitutes a hazard, uh, it would, or in the right way, it could come down. So who determines if it's a hazard is?
So it would be myself and Public Works. Um, currently we, we do the same thing with heritage trees. It needs to be dead or dangerous, which is
Which, which the public has a right to contest.
Yeah.
They'll say, no, it's not that big of a hazard like the oaks uh, on Mount Vernon, right? And so we went through all these testing uh, things to see in xraying it to see, you know, the health of it.
So uh, it, we would work with Public Works again, the engineer and uh, we would see what we could do to repair the sidewalk without. Because we also don't want to cut the roots on the tree and have the tree fall over. So it's a balancing act of preserving the trees, uh, but repairing the sidewalk so it's safe.
I just think that what we're all saying here is that we would like to preserve trees to the greatest extent possible. However, if it is a public nuisance, a public hazard, that somebody's gonna, you know, drive into it or it's gonna fall over and we are aware that it is disease or something is going to fall over on a house or somebody are likely to. And of course, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know what's going to happen with the winds and everything. That happens. But I guess we just don't want to have an ordinance where it can be misused and cut down trees because people may not want them there anymore.
Okay, Rick. Okay, two questions that actually relate to this item. One is, so, so the item is a public hearing to approve these changes to the Atherton Municipal Code. But in the staff report, there's also two other issues. And I guess my question is, is what you're asking for is direction on these other two issues? One of which is under the title Arborist Tree Reporting Requirements, which is the issue of monthly versus quarterly. I don't see that specifically in the code. So can we give you the comments and is that a direction related issue? And the second one is under the next item, which is within the staff report, which is called Future Amendments to the Guidelines, which is asking, I think, for direction as to whether the staff should be able to adopt changes to the guidelines. And if so, what, what's this council? Are both of those directional things? That's my question.
No. So the, the first one you, you questioned was the Heritage Tree Preservation Standards and Specifications. The current process requires council approval of those. So that's why it's before you tonight to have changed from monthly to quarterly. So you're approving the guideline change.
So that's within the guide, but we haven't been given the guidelines.
Yes, they're attached.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
Yeah, the guideline was.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And then the third item is actually direction on future changes to those guidelines. We want to streamline that process if we can.
I understand. I understand the request, but that's a directional.
Correct. Okay.
I can speak on both of those items if you would like me to.
Well, we're not speaking on items. We're asking questions.
Can you answer any questions or give clarifications?
I think, I think it's clear that based on your time availability and what people are, what people are asking for that, that are affected by this, quarterly is sufficient.
Just to be clear, this is what you're recommending, right?
Brought up by a resident and developer to make this change, but we worked through this with planning commission. We were able to come up with this solution and this code change.
So you're good with it?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure.
So is there some safe builds, like some safety built into them there? If they're not submitting their reports quarterly, then they will have to go back to submitting monthly until we see that they're complying. That's something that the, the planning commission recommended. I don't know if you want to do that.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of our safety valve if they're not cooperating and doing what we're saying they should do. Quarterly, I mean, monthly is, is a lot. It's, you know, and quarterly, I think, is a good amount of time for things to either get worse or get better.
Yeah, that's the only thing that was actually highlighted in here. Yeah. Quarterly is great.
Yeah.
And we've heard from a number of developers quarterly as well. And a number of residents asking for quarterly. So it's good.
And going back to the TPZ zone, can I make a comment or ask?
Sure.
So the overarching rationale for the TPZ zone is to protect the health of the tree during construction so that bulldozers are bulldozing and digging basements in an area where it's going to severely damage or compromise a tree. And so you're saying that, and then there's types of trees. Some trees have spreading roots. Some trees have deeper roots. Some trees have more or less roots. It depends upon the tree. I mean, can it really be one size fits all, you know, as a blanket TPZ zone so many feet away?
I mean, if we were in a perfect world, we could, by the species, the age and the tolerance to construction, we could figure out the TPZ zone for every tree. However, that's not something we, we, we were trying to get away from that because that's something we were doing before we updated the ordinance and that's very time consuming. So that's why we came up with a number that was somewhat of a buffer. So rather than saying everything's six X, which most things are not going to have a TPZ zone of six X if you follow arboricultural standards and best management practices. And so that's why how we came up with the ten times and then to allow people to go down to eight times. Now, if you, if you have a, if you can make the findings to go less than eight times, then that's when you would look at that at planning commission. One thing that we discussed at planning commission was that maybe in some cases where people are wanting to build in fifty square feet less than the eight times, that that wouldn't necessarily have to go to planning commission. So that would lessen the burden on staff, on, on planning commission, just for cases that have a small entrance into the TPZ zone. I just wanted to bring that up, not as something to discuss tonight, but that's just something that the planning commission might look into. Just so that would lessen probably the TPZs from ten to eight or even less yearly for the planning commission submittals.
Okay, I guess we're giving comments. I'll give my comments.
Might as well, but we didn't take public comments yet. I know that there had been.
Speaking to the content.
Go ahead, give your comment.
Well, no, I'm happy to take public comment rather than we're.
I asked the questions about.
That's okay. What's, are you done?
Yes.
All right, let's take public comments. Carol.
Well, I'm here tonight, Carol Flaherty, Camino, Porlo, Zorbalas. I'm here for item two, which is the change from the monthly, from the quarterly, from the monthly to quarterly reports. So I'm the one that actually brought this up and I brought it to the planning commission back in April. Because what has happened is that when Sally first came to town, I don't know, six or seven years ago, she came to the builders roundtable and she suggested we have an arborist report. And the options were quarterly or monthly and the builders said quarterly. Somehow it became monthly. We took our eye off the ball and at that time, these reports were costing about a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty dollars. Over the course of time, these reports are now costing us about three hundred to five hundred dollars a month for the arborist. That's what they're charging us, plus travel time. So I brought it in April because a friend of ours who's building on Stockbridge said, and I can believe it, we have paid our arborists twenty-one thousand dollars during the course of our three years of construction for these arborist reports. And our arborist, I chatted with him and he said, I really don't like this either because I have to write twenty-five reports every month. Because he has twenty-five accounts he's working on. We tend to use the same arborist. And for Sally, she's over there getting a hundred of these reports and they come on the same day. So the problem is they've gotten really expensive. Secondly, the arborists don't like them because they have so many to write and they walk on the job site and they take a look around and they say, oh yeah, the chain link fence is in the same spot. That's it. And we get charged five hundred dollars. And then Sally actually has to have help from others in reading these every month. So quarterly seems to be a good compromise because Sally is still recommending that our arborists come and take a look each month. And the mayor may not. But really why I wanted to come tonight, besides sharing that with you and asking for approval is to say, I was impressed as heck with the process from April. I went to three planning commission meetings, which I really hadn't gone to earlier. I thought they were thoughtful. They were, were really well argued. And I thought Sally was incredibly open minded. So I'm here tonight to tell you that the process was great and that I think we have a terrific town arborist who really does a great service for us. I've worked a lot over the years with Sally. I found her to be just really the penultimate professional on this issue and everything else. And I for one, thank Sally.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Betsy?
And that big budget that you have, I think you can find some money for a raise for her.
That's not on the agenda.
Betsy Colby at forty-five London, and I have a similar support for Sally. I really support her recommendations and I thank her for her time. I really encourage the, the largest TPZ zone that we can get. I feel like with all the construction and ADUs and everything that we're, we're going to lose even more trees. So thank you, Sally, for all your time.
Any other public comments here in the room? Public comments online?
We do have one. We have Anne.
Oh, oh, come on forward. Thanks. Sorry.
I commend Sally for her work as well. However, my name is Gerda Angerman, seventy-four, Laburnum, and I'm here in regards to understanding the eight hundred ADU has no regulation for trees. And yet, the others all have the regulation for trees. And you want to encourage ADUs? Do you want to just encourage the eight hundreds or the twelve hundred?
We can't do anything with the eight hundred. It's state law.
Oh, it's a state law. Thank you.
Yes, we can, no, none of our, our, our heritage tree requirements don't apply that because it's been outlawed by the state law. So think about who you vote for next November in the state.
Is there another state law in regards to basements for ADUs with no tree issue?
I believe there is state law that allows basements.
But there isn't a reduction on the distance for the trees for a basement?
Depending on the size.
I see. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, online?
Anne, you have the floor.
Thank you. I don't understand why I can't get my video to go. Are you turning that off, Anthony? Because I, I don't have the right, it's not allowing me to do that.
Go ahead, Anne.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm sorry you can't see me and I apologize for not being there in person. I did, I did read the proposed changes to the municipal code as well as the proposed changes to the guidelines. I have no problem with the substance of them. I do have a problem with the language. It's not well drafted and I would like to propose some changes that make it better English, but says the same thing.
Okay, can you get them to staff?
I can certainly do that. You don't, do you want me to mention the nature of them or just send them to staff?
Get them to staff.
I will happily do that. Thank you, Mayor.
No problem. Okay, we'll close, close public comments. There's nobody else online, correct? And then we will vote on this. Okay, so it sounds like the main.
Wait, we haven't had any discussion.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Well, we've had so much discussion.
Well, some of us.
Yes, okay. Rick, you have a comment. Sorry.
I've got several comments. Okay, I, I think I've got in the night, three or four comments. The first comment is in the or proposed ordinance changes. I don't have any problem with the, with the specific language changes that are recommended. But I did think that there was one language change, which I, I would recommend in section eight point oh eight point zero two zero. The, the first sentence reads, "On receipt of such report or in the event such tree is otherwise reported", this is, this is sidewalk trees that are dangerous.
Right.
And its existence confirmed. I think the word existence isn't what the right word. I think it, it should be and its condition confirmed because we're talking about a tree that's in a dangerous condition. Its existence is there, but it's conditioned. So I would change that to condition. That's a minor comment. Okay, my second comment deals with, I have two comments on the, what is this? I think they, these involve changes to the guidelines. I, I support the change from a monthly to a quarterly report required. But what we had talked about before is if there's no change to the property during the quarter, the developer doesn't have to provide a quarterly report if there's been no change. There would be a quarterly report required if there was any change. But to have to have somebody, have to have an arborist come on site and prepare a report seems like an unnecessary expense and part of our goal here is to make these guidelines as user friendly while still adopting and supporting all aspects of our heritage tree ordinance. So I think that in the guideline change, we need to, and, and I know George and I have talked about this and this was what the council had talked about when we discussed it earlier. We just should include the language that if there's no change, then the report isn't required.
Excuse me, who determines that there's no change and what does that mean? Yeah, I don't understand.
George had specific language on it.
Yeah, well, I'd like to hear from Sally on that too.
Yeah.
No problem.
So I wouldn't be able to determine if there's no work on over one hundred of the full site development. So the onus would be on the contractor. Once I would send the email saying it's due, they could send back something to me saying that they haven't worked on the property. That's how I look at it going because I wouldn't do a site visit to every site to make sure that they're working on their project.
So they would have to, they'd have to send you something saying there's been no change.
That's fine.
Most contractors just keep up to date with me and if, and, and when they know they're not going to be working on the site or starting grading and drainage or they're new residents, they usually let me know. And then I put that on my, my Excel spreadsheet. So I don't see that being a problem.
Okay, I, I think that's reasonable that they would have to tell her that there's been no change and.
Yeah, Brittany Benix, town planner. I would just say that I think it would be helpful for Sally if you indicated what you constitute a change.
Well, it's going to take some time. I'm very comfortable with her judgment on that.
Okay.
Okay, then the second and slightly related issue is there's a requirement that anytime there is a proposed, a permit for development on a property, that there has to be an inventory report of the heritage trees. And if that property's being rebuilt as a new single family residence and undoubtedly an ADU along with it, then a inventory report of all the heritage trees on the property makes sense. I have no problem. But if the permit is for example, an ADU or a accessory building, then it makes no sense that the homeowner would have to pay the cost to inventory every heritage tree on the property. They should have to inventory heritage trees within a range of that development. And I think somewhere in here, it talks about, in the guidelines, it talks about thirty feet. And I'm comfortable with staff proposing what that range should be, but it's an unnecessary expense for homeowners to have to inventory every single heritage tree if they're going to put an ADU, for example, onto a corner of their lot. So I'd like to
Yeah.
clarify that that inventory requirement would not have to be for the whole property, but unless they're doing a major.
Can I make a comment back to you about that? I mean, I think I agree in your overall premise about that. If it's, you know, relatively minor renovation or construction that's only going to affect a certain area. And I think that needs to be more defined than just, you know, an ADU or whatever. There should be some kind of a scale, like if you're only going to be touching no more than, I don't know, a third of an acre or something. You only need to or whatever.
Well, I think if it's going to be, and if they're going to, they have to provide a
A site plan.
Map of where they're doing the work and within a certain
Yeah.
footage, and it includes fifteen feet on neighboring property. I don't have any problem with that.
Yeah.
Because that's designed to protect heritage trees on neighboring property. But if your lot is a two hundred by hundred foot lot or.
Oh, it's two hundred by two hundred.
Yeah, two hundred by two hundred, then it makes no sense to have to inventory all the heritage trees that are a hundred and fifty feet away from where you're gonna build, you know, put in an ADU.
Well, let's let Sally comment.
Well, there's also plumbing and things, you know, underground.
Yeah, any, any work within certain range of any work.
That goes to that new ADU construction.
Let's hear from Sally.
Okay.
So currently we ask for a full site inventory, mostly for full site developments and large grading and drainage projects. That's the only time we request you to submit an actual tree inventory of the trees. of the trees, uh, with the photos and with the appraisal amount and with the information on the health of each tree. For ADUs or accessory structures, we just need you to plot the trees on, on the plan. You don't need to submit a separate tree inventory.
So, why don't we say?
We already have that in.
Why don't we say the tree inventory as directed by the town arbers? You'll tell them what they want.
Need some more responsibility.
I just think if, I, I don't have any problem with that, but that should be in the guidelines, I don't think that's what's in the guidelines.
Yeah.
Okay. We can make them match, certainly, uh, and just one little bit of anecdotal information. Uh, my wife and I are doing a small, small deck repair, which has, um, evolved to, uh, new patio, new driveway, new rear yard, uh, patio area and extension on the, so, things like that happen, and so that's.
Project grows.
Track, yeah.
And, yeah.
So?
Well, then.
Point is that you're busy on the weekend?
No.
Projects evolve, yes.
So, two more comments, if I can just finish.
Sure.
Um, okay, on the, uh, requested direction on future amendment of the guidelines, I think that I would like to enable staff to, uh, adopt edits. I'd say adopt non-material edits, I'd like to put the language "non-material" in there and that is fine for me to be a staff judgment, uh, of the guidelines. But I'd also like the, for whenever staff has changed the guidelines, to report to council on what those changes were at the next council meeting. So, and, and I don't think doing it in one-on-ones is sufficient, I really think it needs to just go into the record and it can be consent, but it needs to go into the record because the public has to have a right to see what the changes were.
Can it be part of the departmental report?
It.
Otherwise, you're taking action on it and it doesn't change the process.
I think it's fine to be part of the department.
I think that would be the best place.
Yeah.
Okay, then my final comment addresses the more controversial issue of the tree protection zone. I think it makes absolutely no sense to have a different tree protection zone based on the size of a property. It, we need to protect the trees. And, right now, the tree protection zone for RB1 properties is that they be 6X. And, the language says that if there's a desired exception, then they can request an exception down to 3X. Which, I think is totally contrary to what we're told is protective of the trees.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, I, I think we should have what's protective of the trees, and it's not any different if you're a little property or a big property. If you're protecting the trees, you're protecting the trees. It makes zero sense to me that there be a difference based on the size of your property, it just ends up, uh, penalizing people, that is unnecessary, let's have the right tree protection zone, and.
That's what I said.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm not disagreeing with what you said, Bill, I, I'm just addressing the policy issue.
Yeah.
Well, I disagree with this.
I know you do, you already said that. I don't know how Elizabeth feels.
The re, the reason, in my view, the reason, it sounded to me that the, the smaller, the smaller protection zone was only because the properties are so small that that was a compromise, that's not the optimal. I got the impression that the optimal, if all things being equal, would be the bigger. And if you have the room to do the bigger protection, I think you should do it. So, I agree with what we have here, especially since it doesn't seem to be a problem, since the person who asked to implement it is saying it's not a problem, so, if, uh, if it's not broken, don't fix it, in my opinion.
So, I, I'll have, I have a couple of questions about this. On the smaller lots, would it be fair to say that some of the trees on a smaller lot may actually be, uh, smaller, you know, not so big? No? And so, and so then if they aren't really big and taking up a lot of room on the smaller lot, um, then, your, um, construction area is going to be smaller and further away from this large tree. And, the, what kicks in, in my understanding, is that uh, if it's a smaller, um, protection zone, you have to hand dig. If you're going to, uh, the roots, right, you have to, instead of just having your bulldozer out there and your backhoe, but you have to hand dig around the roots and do everything you can to mitigate damage.
Yes, at 6X, you would have to do that.
At 6X.
When we approve 6X at the planning commission, that's a requirement.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So, that's not a default, I mean, that's not the, the baseline, that's like a compromise, but then you have to take extra steps to protect the roots.
If it's, if it's a smaller lot, 6X is the requirement, okay?
And you still have to.
Could be ancillary.
Still have to hand dig.
If it's, if it's a larger lot, then you have to go and make an appeal, then you have to pay the fee and try and get scheduled at the planning commission and take up time at the planning commission.
That's what planning commissions for.
I just think that, I think that I'm with Rick, which I said from the very beginning. Uh, we missed that when we did the last update. Because, I think he and I had already discussed it. We thought it should be the same because it's the same tree on two different lots.
It still would have had to come back.
No difference if the other lot is smaller.
It still would have had to come back to council, you don't, you don't get to arbitrarily.
Uh, we're not, no, because that whole thing came to the council.
We could, we, we could reduce it all to 6X or we could decide it should all be 8X. We, we should choose the right number. And, yeah, there, on a, on a smaller lot, there's gonna be some, you have less property you can develop, it's smaller.
Mm-hmm.
But, if you're protecting the tree, you should protect the tree.
Mm-hmm.
And, I mean, I, I guess I should feel less concerned for where there's arborist discretion, and, and right now, our code gives the arborist discretion down to 3X in the smaller lots.
Which I have a.
And that mean, she may never agree to that, but, that's what the code gives.
Right.
And that, and I'm saying, our job is to set good, reasonable policy. And the trees are the trees, they're not gonna change whether you're a small lot or a big lot.
Yeah.
It doesn't change.
We can make it just one standard number, everybody will remember it.
But.
I just don't think you have one size fits all.
Okay, well, it's, it's two to two, so I guess we'll have to push that discussion to a later meeting.
Perhaps, uh, what if it were, and you can get Sally's opinion on this, 8X for both R1A and R1B and allow Sally to have or be able to grant the exceptions only down to 6X and anything beyond 6X has to go to the planning commission.
I think that's reasonable.
Yep.
Okay.
So, you brought it up?
For both.
But we actually brought it down from the 10 to 8 as a standard.
Change.
Right. We have to notify them and all that, because it's just a guideline change, but.
Right now, currently, uh, we don't, I've never received any staff exception for 3X. That was something we put in there, so that they both had a staff exception. And nobody's ever applied for a 3X staff exception, um, and an R1B.
But, you would then get R1B permit requests for an exception down to 6X.
We would start, yes. So, I'm not sure that the numbers would equal out, currently, we get 10 planning commission TPZs and 33 staff exceptions. I'm not sure if the number would just.
We're just saying, everything is, is 8X. And then you have the discretion to approve further down, as does the planning commission. So, it doesn't matter how, how big a tree is or, you know, not, well, it does. Matters if it's, if it matches the heritage tree requirement. Doesn't matter if you have a little lot or a big lot. If it's a little lot, they're buil, building a big house, well, then it's in the build area and they have the right to take it down, period, the end.
But, so just to be clear, if you move in that direction, the R1As, you probably might see less applications for exceptions, but in R1B, you're probably gonna see a lot more. So, those permities would be required to pay for that application and whatever that process is to go back down to 6X, which they currently enjoy without a permit.
Oh, that's why we originally said 6X for everything.
I'm just saying intellectually, it, it doesn't make any sense to me it should be different for the different sized lots, I'd like to protect the trees and if 8X is better than 6X, then we probably should have had that for the R1Bs, if 8X isn't really necessary, if 6X is the right number, we should have that for everybody. I mean, it doesn't make any intellectual sense that there's a difference, the trees are the trees.
Which, what's your optimum number? Because you made it sound like the 6X was a compromise based on being utilitarian for the smaller lot and allowing them to build. If it was up to you, what, would, would it be 10? What would, what would your number be?
Yeah, my recommendation is 10, uh, with an eight-time exception, um, many standards are 12X the trees, and I understand that's a large number, so that's why we, in our old ordinance, it, in our older ordinance, it said 12X. So, that's why we brought it down with 10 with a staff exception, if you can show that there's no other location, the tree can handle the construction impacts, um, then you could give it down to eight times. I just wanna reiterate that we just don't get that many applications that ask for the staff exception, most people can comply with the 10X on an R1A lot.
I, I don't wanna change that, I think the 10 is, is good on that. And, um, the R1B, uh, you know, make it eight, and, but, but then, we've had this in place for a while, and so now we're penalizing the smaller lot owners. Cause then they have to make, you know, come back and
Well, I, I, I think, I think it's better to change the R1A to 10 and, and leave the R1B at 6 if that's what you want.
Yeah.
Uh, but, right now, we're penalizing larger lot owners who wanna do any kind of development because they ha, i- if, if it's gonna be within 8 and 10, then they have to incur an additional cost that the smaller lot owners don't have to incur.
Well.
You are making the larger lot owners pay more money, which they unnecessarily have to pay.
Right.
And that's not right.
I think that the larger lot owners can.
Well, I think they should both be eight and we'd be done with it. That's what I.
I feel more comfortable with the larger lots at 10, because I think they've got more property and they can redesign or, you know, work within their, uh, landscaped environment more easily than a smaller lot owner.
I agree with you, Elizabeth, and I also hear that she's not a problem. The people that are doing it saying it's not a problem, so why are we fixing something that's not a problem?
Yeah.
All right, well, then make both of them 10.
Well, now you're changing and penalizing, so we're saying keep it, not change anything.
I'm not penalizing anything.
You're penalizing the smaller lot owner.
I'm protecting the tree, which is what you've said you wanted to do.
The smaller lot owner.
So, um, just to call to your attention that we will be discussing ADUs next and trees and ADUs, so, I mean, that's another factor that we'll be looking at too. So, if you, if you're worried about people not being able to build, to build an ADU, we are going to address that in the next item.
Yeah, just build an 800 foot ADU. Then you can take down any heritage tree you want.
Right.
Well, I'm a fan of that, but that's a safe regulation.
On your front lot line.
On your front lot line, you can take down any heritage tree anywhere on your property. Zero protection.
That's not something that we have, uh.
So, Town Planner Brittany Bendix, I do want to point out that we have not noticed publicly this conversation about making any changes entirely to R1A and R1B. Um, and that would have to happen, and so, we can bring this back with staff recommendation and a proposal that's publicly noticed and on the council's calendar for this discussion to continue. Um, and then, hopefully, we can then refocus on the other topics that are raised in the staff report.
Okay, so we're gonna continue the TPZ conversation?
Yeah.
January?
All right.
And no action is, is necessary in that regard, we would just pursue with notification that consideration of that topic would, would be occurring, um, complete with a staff report and staff recommendation.
Okay, fine. Uh, okay, then we only have to vote on essentially one major change here, other than some of the wording changes that have been pointed out. Um, is the, uh, change from the reporting from monthly to quarterly, which I think we had a pretty good.
And introduction of the ordinance.
And the introduction of the ordinance without reading the whole thing, even though we did a lot of that. Okay.
So moved.
To vote?
Yeah.
Okay, and we have the vote.
I'd make a motion that we approve the, um, recommendation to change the reporting uh, from one month, every monthly, to every quarterly, three months. And, um, that we introduce the reading of the ordinance.
Without, without reading it.
Without reading it.
I second that. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Oh, and we are continuing the discussion on the TPZ zones.
We are.
It'll be renoticed.
It'll be renoticed, okay.
Looks like, uh, we have another public comment from Anne Yvonne Walker on this.
Well, we'd already closed public comment.
Thank you. If it's in relation to Anne's textual changes that are minor to the guidelines, we can take those as staff and incorporate.
But, I, that's what we asked her to do. Get with staff. You said they were sentence changes. Not substantive.
Anne, so we're going back to item eight?
Eight or, yeah, eight or nine, yeah, whichever number it has there.
ADUs.
I'm on eight.
Okay, next is the ADU requirements.
Good evening again, Town Planner Brittany Bendix. Uh, Anthony will be bringing up a presentation for me here. I thought it might be helpful to have some slides to get us through this staff report. So, tonight, we are introducing the ordinance for an ADU update. Next slide. And staff's recommending that the council conduct a public hearing to introduce the ordinance that would repeal and replace chapter 17.52, which deals with accessory dwelling units. Um, you'll see in the subsequent slides that the changes that are required to this section are pretty substantial. Um, and to that point, there is a, uh, packet on your, on, in front of you tonight that includes the red line changes that should have been shown in attachment six. Um, where, in your packet, attachment six was all black text. The red text should have been shown and it shows what the actual changes are. And for members of the public here tonight, there's a copy on the, a copy of this packet on the back table. Um, and then the second portion of the changes are to chapter 17.36, which deals with public facilities and schools districts, and then chapter 17.60 for definitions. Next slide. A brief background of the ADU legislative changes that have occurred since 2019. Uh, for a while, many jurisdictions were moving forward with their own ADU ordinances. And then in 2019, we saw a robust overhaul of ADU legislation that was initiated by the state over at least five bills. Uh, in response to that change, the town had a major update to their ordinance in 2020. And then in 2020, since that time, over the past three years, there have been changes nearly every year to ADU legislation. So, this update reflects pretty much all of the changes that we've seen uh, come from the state and the language aligns with state law. Next. Meanwhile, we also are going through our sixth, that sixth cycle housing element process. So, there are elements of our discussion tonight that look at portions of the adopted housing element that discuss ADUs. Next slide, please. So, this lists all of the areas of changes to the ADU ordinance. And so, if you look at that attachment that I just referenced, there's a lot of red text. Uh, it includes definitions, uh, calling out the accessory nature of ADUs, making sure that that's recognizes accessory to a primary dwelling or a multifamily dwelling. The maximum number of units, floor area requirements, all the way down to specific definitions for kitchen and efficiency kitchens. And you'll, you may see language in here that doesn't necessarily seem applicable to Atherton. Well, ultimately, what we have to do is, once we have an ordinance adopted, then we have to submit it to the state, similar to the housing element where a different group of planners at HCD will review our housing, or sorry, our ADU ordinance against the state law and give us comments back, and then, we might be here again to clarify some language.
Well, in that manner, then, on some of these areas of change, you may point them out, but if they've been included in recent state law or past state law, can you make those clear that those are really not up for debate by?
Sure, I will, in just one moment. Um. Trying to get my train of thought back. One second. So there are like the definition of an efficiency kitchen. We don't really see that applied in Atherton. But we're keeping that exact language because it aligns with what's in state law. And we don't want to be dinged for it when we submit the package to HCD for review and they say, well, you didn't address efficiency units in your ordinance. Next slide. So everything in orange here on the slide represents language that is changed to comply with state law. It's pretty much everything in here. And it really brings home this conversation that we've been having on a number of housing issues here at town. Where can the town evoke any sort of local control or have influence on this development? Next slide. So here is where the town has the ability to influence them, to provide some influence. And it's done with two objectives. The first is to incent- incentivize compliance with the town's own standards. There are specifications relative to setback standards where an ADU doesn't. An 800 square foot ADU per state law can be built right along the front property line. So what can the town do to incentivize someone to build something that's actually set back from the main building and from the front property? And one of the ways that we've done that is providing opportunities for larger ADUs. But even then, the state says you can only grant up to 1,200 square feet. So there's only 400 square feet of bonus area that we could really can apply. The second objective that we're working with is the town is relying heavily on ADUs and the development of ADUs. To meet the town's Rena objectives, especially for lower income households. And so here are the three areas where I'd like you to focus and that were called out in the staff report. Because there's actually an ability to influence relative to these objectives. One is the bonus ADU program. That comes from the housing element and suggested that we could offer up a bonus ADU under certain circumstances. But I want to take a look at that with you because there's new information relative to the number of ADUs that might be germane to that topic. And then I think that there is a conversation that's needed to be had relative to deed restricted affordability that the council really hasn't dove into yet. So that's one leg of this conversation or one area of this conversation tonight. The second is about ADUs located above garages. That was an item also called out in the housing element as an area of opportunity. And it's something that I heard from the city council and planning commission. At their May, May 10 study session that happened earlier this year. So looking at how we can do that. With height setbacks, floor area incentives. But then also taking what we're learning as a town about objective standards and applying them through roofline requirements. Entry treat or entry locations and window treatments. So that's another area that we can talk about tonight. And then finally. We'll get back to heritage trees and conversations about tree standards. As previously pointed out by the mayor on the last item, any ADUs that are 800 square feet. Aren't subject to the heritage tree ordinance ordinance. So how do we balance incentivizing developers to adhere to the town's setback? And preferred development standards while still protecting our trees? And I've had an opportunity to work with Sally closely on coming up with a program that she feels comfortable about. Or comfortable with and we'll go through that as well. Next slide. So getting to the bonus ADU program. Where I want to start is with the conversation about maximum number of units. Because this is a critical change for many jurisdictions that we're seeing caught. In these HCD letters that are coming back saying, well, no, you didn't quite understand how the law is written. And it's a pretty minor change. This is state law in italicized text and it effectively is community communicating how many ADUs. A town must allow. In section A, it says one accessory dwelling unit or one junior accessory dwelling unit. Per certain standards and then B, one detached new construction accessory dwelling unit. So that's what the law was until about 2022, I believe. And then, so our assumption was that you could have two units. Next slide. But then there wasn't an update to the state law that changed that or to an and in subsection A. And so now you have A, one accessory dwelling unit and one junior accessory dwelling unit. And then B, one detached new construction accessory unit, which adds up to three. So that is a major change that I've called out in the ordinance and want to bring to your attention. Next slide. This is important because in the housing, well, it's important not just because, hey, guess what? There's an extra ADU allowed that nobody was really thinking about. But it's also important because in the housing element, there is a program that suggests that the town would consider adding a bonus ADU. For lots that are greater than two acres. Again, I'm going to emphasize that this is only for properties that are two acres or larger. But it does start adding up and then it gets to four units. The other piece of this conversation is that outside of what's in the housing element, there has been discussions about. Requiring that that bonus ADU be deed restricted. And the intent of that is to secure the Rena. The town's defense relative to the Rena provision. By adding additional documentation that these units are being provided and they're restricted for a certain period of time. The timeframe that's been put out there is 15 years and the affordability level is low income. At the planning commission, the commissioners had a difficult time with the concept of. A deed restriction requirement on the property. And that was also reflected in public comment at the planning commission as well. The reason why they inevitably, well, they eventually voted to support the doc, the draft ordinance as written. Was because it's ultimately a voluntary program. It's not something that's required. It's just a voluntary program on two acres or more. And then it it would provide greater documentation. So I will put that out there. Next slide. So moving on to ADUs located above garage. Or garages, and I do want to specify that this would be for detached garages.
There's a question on the previous slide.
Sure.
So you're pre, yeah, so this slide shows three units. Including the additional new ADU on two acres or more.
No, that would be four units total.
Oh, I see. That's a plus. Okay. So my understanding, okay, so my question is, my understanding from the staff report is that. What, I guess you identify as one ADU would be a. ADU that is either internal to the house or detached. But would require conversion of an existing structure. Is that right?
It's partially right. So the the one in orange, the one ADU. That reflects an ADU that's internal to the house, existing or proposed. Or a converted area that could be detached. The way you had articulated it just now, made it sound like it could be that third separate detached new construction unit. So I want to be very clear that yes, it could be detached, but only through conversion of another structure.
Okay, so in, in new construction. A, a, a property owner could build. An ADU, a, a new house, an ADU attached to the new house. A JDU attached to the new house and an ADU detached from the house, all new construction.
Yes.
Four units.
Uh, no, that's three units. And if there were, it was for two acres or more. If we change this, then they could do a fourth ADU with the conditions that we've.
No, you have the house, you have the ADU. That could be attached, you have the JADU and you have the detached ADU. That's four units on that lease of property. That's what I just said.
Including the house.
And then if you add a bonus, that's five units there.
But that would be acres or two or more acres, properties of two or more.
If, 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 okay, so if the. ADU isn't built attached to the single family residence. And you have a. There, there is an option to add a third ADU. If you've built a, if you have a JDU and you've built a, a new ADU, there's an option under state law to. Have a third ADU on any property that's a conversion, a detached conversion of an existing piece of property.
Yes, and that would fall under the orange.
But that would enable someone to build a new structure. They have to convert an existing structure.
Correct. And just to reiterate, this is a single family zoning.
Right, right.
So the question is, do we want to add a fifth unit? Including the, including the.
The main residence.
House with with conditions. And we need to give you input on that.
Yes.
Cause all the other stuff, one through three, plus the main house is state law.
Yes.
Will become a rental place. Might as well just build a high rise.
So you, you can either provide comment and input now.
Let's continue.
Or continue to staff report.
I only have 14 slides, I think, so. So we were at the, yes, ADUs above garage, garages, detached garages. The objective here that we were angling towards was incentivizing compliance with the town setbacks. By allowing ADUs above existing or proposed detached garages. There is three areas of focus here. One is height. What should the maximum height of the structure be? The housing element actually includes a height of 18 feet. Staff is recommending that it be raised to 25 feet. That's consistent with. A, an attached ADU above an attached garage. And it again incentivizes compliance. And then also matching the roof form. This is more of an objective standard that we're suggesting here to provide some design. Coherency on the site. The second category are floor area exemptions. In order to access the ADU located above the garage. Staff has recommended that there be floor area exemptions for any sort of ground level. Entry space within the garage itself to facilitate that kind of design. And also to call out that the stairs would have to be enclosed. And then third, the category is privacy. There are restrictions on balconies and decks. There are restrictions on or specifications on window standards specifically for any walls that are facing. An adjacent property. And that was something that the planning commission did slightly tweak. I'm going to come back to the eight foot, uh, eight foot fencing in a moment. And then there are references to providing landscaping. Or where possible. So with the eight foot fencing, this was something that at the May study session wasn't. The direction to staff wasn't necessarily clear and it was a little back and forth between six feet and eight feet. Another element that has popped up is that the fencing would inherently apply to the front of properties. And so it would be helpful to get feedback on whether or not fencing should be required. At any specific height on the front property lines and then whether or not there should be a distinction between six feet and eight feet. So that's one of the items that I raised for you in the staff report to provide direction on. Next slide. The heritage trees. Again, the objective was to incentivize compliance with the town setbacks. But by providing greater flexibility with the heritage tree ordinance for larger setback compliant ADUs. So as we discussed earlier, if the ADU is 800 square feet or less, the heritage tree ordinance doesn't apply. So how can we work with applicants to. Facilitate these larger units, but make the heritage tree review fairly straightforward. With confidence that the town arborist has what she needs to make administrative decisions. So with TPC exceptions, we've requested that. The town arborist be able to make administrative decisions up to eight X in the R one A. However, the planning commission changed that to six X. Relative to the review process. The review with the town arborist would happen concurrently with planning. We do have specific timelines that we have to meet for the review of ADUs. So that would need to happen at the same time. And that reducing the review threshold to six X. Would then require additional documentation submitted at the time of application. So we included that information in the staff report as well as the general process that Sally would use to do her review. We would make sure that that's published with any sort of public information on ADUs. So that applicants know ahead of time, hey, you're going to need to use, you're going to need to supply this in advance. And they're not going through rounds of revisions just to meet this issue. And then finally is, I think one of the council members, I can't remember which one of you made a comment, side comment about. Using ADUs as a means or a sidestep to remove a heritage tree. And so what we have added to the ordinance. And that, this wasn't called out in your staff report, but it was brought up in the planning commission's staff report. Is that staff has added language to assert that there are timeline requirements for ADU construction. And that there are penalties associated with removal of trees without any actual subsequent development of ADUs. So we've taken a look at that and we've tried to put in some safeguards where we can. Uh, next slide. So next steps. We need to go through the consideration of the ordinance process, of course, here at council. Once an ordinance is adopted, which one should be, it needs to be, if we don't adopt an ordinance, then the state rules would just apply. And we lose the local, any sort of local ability to administer an ADU program. So we do need to adopt an ordinance. Once we do, we send it to HCD for a review. HCD looks at the ordinance, any sort of changes that it identifies that we need to make in terms of cleaning up. We would bring back to planning commission and then the city council for consideration. And then ultimately, once we get that gold star from ADU, we can use it in our housing element process. To demonstrate that we are a good actor as a town and in compliance with this. Which is important, again, because ADUs are so critical to our Rena program. Next. So again, our recommendation tonight is to introduce the ordinance that would repeal and replace chapter seventeen point five two. And then amend chapter seventeen point three six and seventeen point six zero. Next. That concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
I have a simple one. We'll start with an easy one. When you said that the ADU process is a different group, does that mean you do that separate? Or you have to make that and then hand it in, like you'd do it now?
I send it to a different department or division of HCD.
So it's submitted separately from our main whole proposal? You could do it earlier, for example.
Exactly. As soon as it's done, that ordinance is going to get, go straight off so that we can get feedback from each CD.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, other questions?
What question?
I've got a few questions. One question is, and I'm looking at the proposed ordinance.
Okay.
And the definition of efficiency unit, it requires or it includes. An oven in the efficiency unit? I take it that's state law?
Yes, that's verbatim from the state law.
Okay, my second question is. In. Section. F. Five. It says. five, it says, it it addresses uh newly constructed detached A D Us. And it says unless necessary to accommodate an A D U of eight hundred square feet or less.
Yes, so that is.
The question is, what is the smallest A D U?
The smallest an A D U could be is a hundred and fifty square feet.
Okay, then we could add that to the language to say clarify, because right now it would allow a fifty foot A D U. Cause it doesn't say anything about it. So anyway, so that that's a comment. I I have another.
Can I, can I go back to that? The only reason that we're mentioning the eight hundred square foot A D U in that code section is because we have to clarify that the, so the the Atherton Minnesota zoning code section has separation requirements for accessory buildings from accessory structures. Or accessory structures from an accessory structure. What this clause intends is that those are applicable unless somehow it inhibits an applicant from pursuing an eight hundred square foot A D U. Which is the state mandated size. Okay, the one hundred.
I don't have any problem complying with state law. I just think when when we have someone who's a developer, res- resident reading the code, if there is information that is assumed like the what the less implies. Then whoever is reading the Atherton code wouldn't know the answer. They have to go read state law to figure that out, which is extremely difficult and burdensome. I'm just trying to make it easier. Okay, my next question is We have in in here, we reference public transit, which we've defined. And we reference high quality transit corridor and major transit stops which have impacts, which we haven't defined, but I'm sure state law does. And I mean, I'm, I I understand there's been a bunch of laws passed at the state level that sometimes have conflicting language within them. The uh in section J three A, this is talking about parking. And it says that an A D U that's located when within a half mile walking distance of public transit. So I assume that is referring to the defined term public transit that we've used. And doesn't refer to those other two areas. Okay. Okay, my next question, in in that same section, three D, it says on-street parking permits are required, but not offered to the occupant of the A D U. I don't know what that means. On-street parking permits are required. I, what we, what we've said is, I think that in somewhere in here, I I think in the staff report. If there's an A D U that's built, you can't require more than one parking space for the, per A D U. And um, and we can and and I think there's also a language about that space has to be available in the driveway, something like that. This refers to on-street parking. You know, we don't have on-street parking, so I don't know why.
So that's an example of language that is directly from state law and in our ordinance. So that H C D doesn't reject our ordinance because we don't address street parking. Under the assumption that one day, if we were ever to enable a street parking program. This wouldn't be telling the whole story.
Okay, so your perspective is it's it it's not really adverse since we don't have an on-street parking program. It's just complying with the state law requirement so that we we don't get a comment from H C D about it.
Correct. And I see Andreas has joined us, so.
Yeah, I I just wanted to kind of reconfirm what Brittany's saying. When H C D reviews these A D ordinances, they basically go through a checklist of all of the requirements that they know are in state law. And they don't really take a closer look at what the actual circumstances are in a place like Atherton. And so it's exactly right. It's just much safer to put something like this in here so they don't kick the ordinance back to us for revisions. Even though it has zero applicability to what our conditions are.
Okay, okay, uh, that that makes sense to me. So my final question is, in section S, uh, this is regarding utility connections. We have the sentence, a new A D U combined with a new house. I assume that means built at the same time, whether it's and and doesn't refer to whether it's detached or attached. Shall have a separate utility connection. Is that a state law requirement? And does it not matter whether the A D U is attached or detached?
No, this is text again, straight from.
Does a J A D U have to have a separate utility connection?
No, because this is within the, there's effectively two two sections of state law that we deal with. The larger, more robust one uh deals specifically with ADUs. That's where this provision lives. And then there's a section, section of state law, a second section of state law that deals specific with uh J A D Us.
That's my question.
I just think that um I was, I was looking at it in a a broader way, uh, not so um specific. But looking at the areas of change per state law, like this little thing. And the only things, there's two uh issues in here that we really should be discussing and making, you know, some decisions about is like the basements and privacy screening and landscaping. And I guess in the heritage trees. Which not, which isn't here, but.
And so that's why I framed the areas of discussion as this bonus A D U program. Which does touch on the the information I've shared relative to maximum number of ADUs. And then the ADUs located above garages, that you don't have to do that. That's not a requirement by state law. That is something that Atherton maybe has some leverage and incentivizing because of the scale of garages in our town. Um, that it could be enticing enough, right? Um, and then, yes, the heritage tree ordinance.
I have some questions. Um, what was the intention behind saying in the garage ordinance? There's a bunch of things I don't, that seem new to me. Like the entrance having to be off the ground floor. So does that assume you can't have a walkway to the upstairs or a wall? Or it has to be inside? And would that then prohibit a person from making a usable apartment? Cause you can, now, if you have to put a staircase where the car is, it's no longer gonna be able to be used as a parking garage. So why did, why was that suggested?
So that was feedback from the May tenth study session, um, that the the entrance to the garage should be enclosed and disguised so that it wasn't looking like an apartment building. Um, or that uh individuals residing there weren't storing their things on the the deck or stairway to get to a second level. I think that then there was also conversation about whether or not the stairway would have to project into a setback area. Um, if it would give anybody some vantage points into a neighboring yard. So it touched on privacy issues as well. And so that's why we've recommended um the enclosed the enclosed stairwell and looking, the exemption from floor area. Uh, I think that's needed because when you get down in the nuances of the building code, you don't necessarily want somebody's entrance to their living unit next to cars or automobile storage. I think that there's even a wall that might be required from the building code. So being able to give some flexibility to actually let people treat that as an entrance to their home.
See, I I didn't understand because in one place you're saying you're gonna give them an exception to build the stairs on the outside. And then another place, it says the stairwell has to be in the inside. Were you proposing two separate things for us to discuss or? I didn't understand that part.
No, and I'm wondering where you saw the stairs on the outside, because I don't necessarily think that that was an intent. So we can look at that.
Wasn't, was there not, well, maybe I met Reddit wrong or I remember it wrong. But I thought we were gonna give an an exception for the staircase on the setbacks. So you could put a outdoor staircase.
So, so I, you know, I think this gets into the actual um, nitty gritty of the potential design of building um an A D U on top of the a gar- an existing garage. And um, uh, council member Hawkins Miles Williams uh, comment about entering from a garage, an interior garage with cars is not, you know, um, desirable. But I think uh having an exterior stair um, that's exposed is not desirable either. And so, you know, it would have to be maybe tacked on to the side of the garage, you know, another structure built on top. And maybe we give a little um variance for an encro- encroachment of that. So um, you, you know, go to your entrance and you open the door and you walk up a enclosed stair into your upstairs garage, A D U.
That also serves to block side light of, you know, side, so that you can't see the neighbor on that side.
You're right there. I mean, it, uh, this is, yeah, they gets into architectural design. And can you make that work? Uh, and would would it be a long dark stairway? Or would you have like a clear story that just brought some light into that stairwell?
So right now, if you were designing, or if you were pursuing an accessory struc- or an accessory building. Uh, it would.
New construction.
New construction, an accessory building, not an A D U, just an accessory building. And it had a s- a stairwell inside to get to um like a mezzanine level or a partial second story. Uh, that would have, that stairwell would have to be within the footprint of that building. Or it would have to comply with the ten-foot si- side setback or rear setback. And so what I'm asking is for the exact same accommodation, except also clarifying that the internal stairway that's provided um to get to the A D U. I don't make any exceptions for setbacks in the draft ordinance, but I do make an exception for floor area. Because I want it to be clear that that floor area occupied by the stair doesn't count towards the A D U and the twelve hundred square feet. And it doesn't count towards the floor area restrictions on the main building.
So if you have a garage then, so let's, cause for me, doing something above the garage is the best kind of thing we can do cause we're not taking up more land, we're, it's already there, you're just making it a little bit higher. So it's a matter of keeping it private. So are you saying if I make a second story and I'm gonna make it into an apartment that I rent out? Where I have to have the stairs going in through the things? Are you saying that I can do it on the outside? And it doesn't count? So I can add like a spiral staircase in a column or something?
If it's enclosed.
If it's enclosed.
The setback requirements, you can do it.
That, that's the key.
Well, it'll also be on the internal side of the building. Doesn't, I mean, you're, you're thinking about it in the setback, but it, you've got all the other side of the building. You could put the staircase facing internally toward the property, not externally toward the neighbor.
Depends on where your configuration is, there's, it's.
If you're putting a building on top of a garage, you've got whatever, you know.
So then if I come in my driveway, so most of them are facing this way, here's the driveway. I, I'm renting now. I have a renter that's gonna come, they park their car there, they're gonna have to go around the building and then go up?
They could just go on the side. They don't have to go around, but on the internal side, the bill, here's the garage. If the side yard is here, you're going in here, there's not gonna be a stairway there. It could be here, or it could be back there. You're right, I mean.
Because usually.
The inside the garage.
But there's breezeways. A lot of the houses are designed, so you have a garage, you have like a little bridge thing, there's a name for it. And then there's the main house. So you can't really put it there because you're, you've got a bridge away from your entry into your main house. So that leaves two other sides that you can do. You can do it on the back, or you can do it within the ten-foot setback.
You're building it. You could widen the bridge, you could widen the breezeway. I mean, there's all kinds of.
Talking about an existing structure, and this is probably the most typical one. Am I wrong? Isn't normally you have a garage, you have a little breezeway, so you can walk without going outside. I'm talking about detached garage that exists. So if you were to take in a detached garage, you're leaving two places where the person can put an external staircase. The back facing that way, cause you're not gonna do it the front, cause that's where the cars drive in. So it's either gonna be in that ten-foot setback or on the back of the house.
You're not gonna do the ten-foot setback.
Ten-foot setbacks prohibited, so it could be anywhere but the ten-foot setback.
So that's requiring any, any girl, any apartment we put above a garage has to enter off the back of the garage.
No, they can enter off the side, or they can go into.
What side? The side on this side is usually.
Well, maybe you have a breezeway there, maybe you don't, but you're the one getting the benefit of the renter.
When, you know.
You know, I mean, why, why do you wanna put the You shouldn't be. We need to be, and looking at these things, we need to consider first and foremost the impact on the neighbor.
I agree with that as well.
And when you're trying to put something that's even closer to them, you're not thinking of them.
Yeah, you wouldn't do that.
Maybe we could put it in the back, but I don't, what I'm trying to say is that we also want it to actually happen. Cause this is the best kind of construction for us. And if you have a two-car garage, I don't know the the footprint of that. But you wanna be able to have enough to have an apartment up there. So where do you get the staircase? So you're saying the staircase is free if I put it in the back?
Free square footage.
But can I physically build that tube on the back side then? Cause I can't do it in the breezeway.
Depends upon how close.
If you're modifying a garage to put on a second story, that is significant work that you are doing to that structure. Um, and.
Most of those garages have space in the back. The car doesn't take up the whole space. You could build it in the back of your garage. And maybe it steps over a workbench, but that's okay. It's taking up three feet of a workbench.
And maybe if it's a three or four car garage, you reduce one of the cars that you would otherwise have in there.
How do we design a rule for all the very, very, very different variations that are out there?
You don't have to. You're only designing, you don't put it, you put it anywhere.
And you're allowing, but we are proposing that we're allowing that extra footage to be in addition to it. So if I have a two-car garage, I can add that tunnel, that outdoor staircase without counting that. Okay.
So the other, the other question is, I know we've had discussion, we're not into multi-family house. We have had discussion about perhaps having a architectural review. Um, especially when we protect, perhaps if we agree going up to twenty-five feet. Can we apply the architectural review to these items?
It would ha- no, it has to be only objective design standards.
And uh, and I have a question about the twenty-five feet.
Yeah, go ahead.
That doesn't seem high enough really for a second floor area.
It'd be higher. It's right now, it's the standard is eighteen feet, twenty-five is you're adding seven feet.
Well, that standard is for the garage portion. But then if you're gonna have a living structure, and usually there's a couple feet of floor area between your foundation and your floor, and then you're only gonna have what, six-foot ceiling heights? Am I not?
Six-foot ceilings.
Well, of course you can't. That's why I'm saying, I'm questioning the twenty-five foot, overall height limit.
Well, you, how, you you think you have a twelve-foot high garage? Your garage isn't twelve feet high. I mean, how, the ceiling in a garage is what? I don't know, eight feet, probably? Eight to ten?
The maximum height of a garage is more than ten feet. I don't know it off the top of my head. I wanna say it's like thirteen to fifteen feet. And that's one of the reasons why I raised the suggested height limit from eighteen feet, which is in the height in the housing element to twenty-five feet. But generally speaking, you can assign ten feet for a floor-to-ceiling height per story. And so twenty-five feet does give you two stories plus five feet of room if you want a taller garage level. Uh, for whatever purposes that you have there, or if you want a taller living space for the A D U, get it above.
You know, roof lines typically, um, that you have to conform with.
Can you, can you explain what the roof form means? Is this an aesthetic decision or is this, what is that?
It has to kind of match the main house.
So right now, we live in Atherton where you can design and build whatever house you want.
But you have to, if you're gonna do this garage. But you have to, if you're going to do this garage over garage construction, it kind of has to match the rest of the house, the main house.
That was something that came up at the study session, as well as through some of the, the public comment that we've received throughout this process. That neighbors, residents don't want disassociation in the design styles between the main residence and the accessory structures. I think we're hearing that too with the multifamily discussion as well, that there's some, they don't, there's not, well, for ADUs and single family homes at this point, there's no specific design or architectural form that you must adhere to. So the request is solely that whatever design aesthetic you choose, it's consistent on your property.
So, but we don't have anything like that right now in any of our rules. You can do, I can do this kind of a house and this kind of a garage, whatever my heart desires right now. So we're, we're free and that that's one of our unique traits of our town. So now we're, now we're reverting back to saying we want to impose design things. So I don't know what I think about that.
For, for an ADU located above a garage, a detached garage, it's really only for this particular massing that's on the property.
But what exactly does it mean? So is it saying that if I have a door, a house with dormers, does that mean I have to have dormers on the garage? Or what does, I don't understand what the term means. I really don't.
It would, so if you have a house with dormers, but that come out of a shed roof, then the ADU needs to have a shed roof. It doesn't have to have a dormer. The predominant roof form is the shed roof. If it's a gabled roof, it needs to be gabled. If it's a mansored roof, it needs to be mansored. If it's flat, it needs to be flat.
So now in the case of, of the ones with the dormers that come out, and again, I don't know all the language. Does that mean that may limit what I can do in my garage if I have to be able to reconstruct those? Because I, it's got to come from the roof. So let's say I have a roof and I have a dormer that comes up on my main house. Does that mean I now can't do a roof that's?
Can I ask you, does your existing garage on your property now sort of match what your architectural style of your house is?
It doesn't have dormers like. So I'm just understanding what.
Needs to have dormers.
But Diana's question's valid, if I understand what she's asking, right, right now, I think the roof on your garage is flat and the roof on your house is gabled and it's slate and the roof on your garage isn't slate.
It is slate, but it is flat, but it doesn't have dormers and the other, other ones like, I don't know the words for it, but it's they don't, they don't exactly match, it's the same material, but.
Well, no, but it's a fair question as to what roof form means.
I, yeah, I don't know what it means. That was a really naive question and maybe others that don't know what it means.
I think the intent is that it should kind of be complimentary to the rest of the architectural styles on the property, especially the main house.
But then you get into what does that mean? Does it mean materials or?
If it meant materials, we would have specified. For the roof form. And then I give an example, a gabled roof form on the main residence shall require a gabled roof form on the ADU above garage.
And a gable means like?
Yes, a gable is a typical roof form.
So if your roof was like this, you couldn't do a flat roof?
Correct.
If you had an existing flat roof garage in a gabled house, then what would happen?
You would have to do a gabled roof.
So you couldn't go with what the existing structure is of, of the existing garage?
Correct. But to point out, if you're adding an ADU above your garage, you're removing the roof to do that.
And you're, and you're building a structure that's, that could be consistent with the size and shape of your mass main house.
Yeah, and you may need to do some structural engineering on your, on your garage. You know, so I think we should look at things that are key towards that apply to the whole neighborhood, just not if a certain person is planning on doing something on their property and trying to form fitness to their property.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't imposing design aesthetic standards when historically we haven't done that. And if we are doing that.
Only the multifamily.
Yeah, well, this would be a multifamily where you had this. But anyway.
This is not multifamily.
Not under the context of the law, right?
I have one more question on. I read somewhere, what are the tree, what are the, right now, our fences are all six foot on all sides. So we're proposing to go to eight foot on, for an ADU. And is it true that there was something that said if it's above seven feet, it requires engineering? And I didn't know what that meant.
Can you point out the seven foot reference?
It's not in your thing. It was in something I read at home in our.
In attachment number two from the May tenth Q and A. It talked about any fencing over seven feet would require engineering for footing most likely.
Does it require engineering?
I don't know.
Depends on the type of fence.
Carol?
If it's a tall fence above seven feet, is engineering required? I don't think our building official is not here, but.
We have to have landscape screening. You have to landscape it too.
So, and I have a, a question. If, if, let's say I am that mean neighbor that builds an ADU four feet from someone's house. And now I get the right, or I'm required to do an eight foot fence. Do I then, can I then ask that neighbor to pay for it like a good neighbor? Or can we make the person be reliable? Like if, if I'm mean enough to make someone have their line of sight disrupted and then on insult to injury, I'm then going to say you now have to pay for half of an eight foot fence. Is that correct? Is that how it works? Or can we require the person who's building that ADU four feet from someone's house to foot the bill for that eight foot fence that they're required?
I agree with that. I brought that up to George.
Yeah, I put that in my pre-agenda email. We can require that the property, the permittee is responsible for the fence. But what we cannot require is that they can't get contributions from somebody else. So if they do solicit their neighbor and say, hey, would you be willing to partner on this fence? And the neighbor says, sure, we can't prohibit that from.
Sure, but if the neighbor says, hell no, you're putting a four feet from my house, are you kidding me? And now you're going to insult me and want me to pay for it?
Permittee would be responsible for.
Okay.
Right, that's why, yeah, I brought that up to George too. I thought you gave me a different answer before. You said if it's, if the, the request is if it's eight, if it's a eight hundred square feet, we can't require anything.
No, eight hundred square feet, we can't require them to solicit from their neighbor to get a contribution. Or to pay for it entirely themselves. Because they could get a solicitation from their.
Well, you know, and any of them, we, we can't require anybody to do anything. Should have to put up the, the larger fence because he's the one putting it up.
In the case, just to be clear, in the case of the eight hundred square foot ADU, can we require an eight foot fence?
Yes.
So we can.
Okay.
The state's not saying, no, you can't do it. That's going to prohibit it from being built.
We should say it's required by the person putting it up.
Yep, okay. Is that right? You were going to say something.
The permittee is required.
Even in the eight hundred, we can.
How they fund that is up to them.
Sure.
But the permittee is responsible.
Okay.
When, when you're talking, they can't hear you on Zoom, so.
Yes.
Yeah, it was good. It was worth sharing.
So I think Carol's describing discussion at a planning commission last January. A January planning commission meeting. It was earlier this year, yeah.
Yeah.
Before the study session.
So for the record, the discussion is fencing. My own personal opinion, and I brought it up to several of council members, if you have new construction and there's no fence and you're putting these ADUs at four feet or at ten feet and you're going eighteen feet or going twenty five, then I think you have an obligation to the neighbor to put at least an eight foot fence up. If there's no fence that's there, or if it's small and there's no landscape shielding. So at the planning commission, there was discussion as to whether an individual who is adding an ADU and they already have a fence in the yard, or maybe not, but they have full landscape shielding where you cannot see through the neighbor, should they be forced to build a fence? And the, the thought was no. And I agree. I think if you already have full shielding, you should not have to. The discussion was also, okay, well, can you use landscaping at new construction instead of a fence? No, in my opinion, because that landscaping is going to take years to grow, years. But if you're on this parcel, it's already full all the way across, it's not fair to that property owner to have to put a fence in. And the fence doesn't have to be on all three sides. It's only where that structure is being built. The other comment I made was I do not favor putting an eight foot fence in the front yard because we have six feet throughout the town now, and I don't think you want a stair step look up and down, up and down on the streets. Thank you.
Right, we got that first time.
Can you take other public comment?
Uh, yeah, we're done with council questions.
Taking public comment.
Was George asked her a question? She added that in. All right. Are there any other public, are there any public comments at this time? Betsy, are you, are you coming up or not?
My concern was when you mentioned the engineered fences, because I, I think that implies cutting more roots. Isn't that what happens when you, what I've seen with some of these like walls and things, they, they just, you know, plow through. Yeah, so anyway, I'm worried about.
Are there any other, yes, Carol, you already had a comment, but.
I'll make it really fast. So I am concerned about this bonus ADU and I want you to think about this scenario. So in my, at my own house, I have four two acre parcels across the street and my next door neighbor has two acres. And I can tell you, two acres is not that large. So now you brought up an excellent point earlier, Brittany, because there was misinterpretation as to how many units you can have. So now you can have an attached ADU, a JADU that's part of the building, a detached ADU and the main house and a garage as well. So potentially you are going to have four to five buildings if you do all this on that parcel. At what point are we multifamily? Because that starts to look an awful lot to me like multifamily if you had different families or residents in these various buildings. Now, do I think Amy's going to do this? No, especially with the deed restriction. But if they did, I just want you to have it in your mind. What are five buildings going to look like on two acres? Not very good.
Thank you, Brittany. Can you have a comment?
Yeah, I'd like to, as Ken Frederick Lindner, would like to echo some of the comments made earlier about the ADU above the garage. First of all, you got a two car garage. You're not going to make that entrance inside the garage because you're going to take away one of the, one of the cars. And second of all, do you really want to walk through cars and garages and stuff to go to your, to your ADU? That doesn't make any sense. I think you can have the out, the outdoor enclosed one, that makes sense, but it's going to be enclosed for all the reasons we talked about. And you got to meet the restrictions on the side, it's a distance. But outdoor, outdoor beside the garage with its own door, probably is the only way you're going to get these things done. Second of all, on the fence discussion, if you already have a six foot fence, you meet the, the distance to the fence requirements and then you put up the second floor, changing that entire six foot fence along that line is a pretty big number and probably not required if you got the right shielding. That becomes site specific. So I think you got to have some site specific issues to come up as well.
So, so you're saying a sec, exception, it would be an exception.
Any other public comments in the room? Yes.
I agree with Carol's comment about the bonus ADU, but I also want on the process, you're not voting on this tonight, right? This is an introduction of the ordinance for first reading. But no one's voting on it because no one's even read it. Introduction of the ordinance is a vote by the council. And then it would be second reading in December, an adoption and then effective thirty days later, sent to the state, et cetera, as Brittany articulated. I would urge you to let residents read it and comment on it before the council makes a vote.
Thank you. Any other comments? About comments that are online?
Your code enforcement officer raised her hand.
Speak Lisa?
Yep.
Is she here?
No, she's, she's online.
Okay.
Good evening, Lisa Marie Daly, Code Enforcement Officer for the Town of Atherton. I, I just had a question in listening to, because we don't have our CBO here. The question was about the engineering for the fencing. Can you clarify, Brittany, maybe a little bit on that? Or anybody as to what the question is related to engineering on that?
The question was whether or not, or at what height a fence requires engineering and what this, what engineering would entail. I think we heard a public comment and confirmation from Sally that that would involve some trenching, perhaps that would disrupt trees.
Okay, yeah, and that's what I was going to chime in on, on that, because I know the state of California, anything over six foot as well as our municipal code, requires that if it's going to be over the six foot, depending on what type of fencing it is that they choose to put in, obviously would require a permit, you know, and of course any cement or, or that type of thing there. So I would just go with the rule of thumb and I think Mike would probably agree with that, is that we just always require that permit over six foot. But I would think that in the state of where we are now for any regular fencing as well, we don't require it for under six foot as long as it's over a certain distance from, you know, if it's a private fence between properties or in front, which is only allowed to be forty two inches if I'm not mistaken, from the front lot line. But if they put cement into the ground, we don't require a permit for that or engineering for that right now. So what would the difference be?
I don't think we can answer that. We'll have to, let's.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comments? I don't see any online, right? Okay, we're going to close public comments. We got to bring it back to council and decide to vote or, or vote in part of it or what? Yes, Rick.
Okay. I've got a couple of comments. First comment is the information on there being three ADUs, JADUs allowed, or required to be allowed by the state for any parcel is new information for us. And one of those authorized ADUs, if it's detached, requires a conversion of an existing detached structure into an ADU. I think that's really important information. I mean, and, and where I'm going with that is, there are lots of detached units that have been permitted and maybe some haven't been permitted that exist in Atherton. Just think about the number of. permitted, and maybe some haven't been permitted, that exist in Atherton. Just think about the number of pools that existed thirty years ago, uh, uh, many of which had a detached unit attached to it, as either a poolhouse or something like that. And, uh, and they were not called ADUs, because we didn't have ADUs, they were never classified as ADUs. Now, with the new state law, uh, that unit would be author, would be able to be qualified as an ADU, beca, if it's detached. And, um, and I think that's a big deal. Uh, and I think that where, where in the past, HCD has said, a, um, a, a unit that had all of the components of an ADU, uh, couldn't be counted as an ADU, because, uh, it doesn't require a new permit to add a restroom or a kitchen, uh, to it. But with this new law change, it actually authorizes those detached units to be qualified as an ADU. So I think if they haven't been qualified as ADUs in the past, we should be able to explore, including those, as qualified ADUs if there's some kind of a submission that recognizes that that unit, i- i- it now qualifies as a third ADU. I think that's a big deal. Uh, and I think that creates, and that state law change creates an opportunity and an argument for why HCD should allow us to count those, because now they're qualified as a third ADU on, or a third authorized ADU on that property. Uh, I, I really think that's a big deal. So that's, that's my number one comment, which, which is my most important comment. My s- second comment is, like I'd mentioned before, we define public transit in, uh, in our definition section. We refer to the state-defined high-quality transit corridor and major transit stop, but we don't define them. Uh, and we don't define them because they're defined in state law. I think we should incorporate that definition into our municipal code, so that somebody who's reading it can understand the impact of, of what, what they mean, rather than have to go to state law. That's a minor comment, but I do think that. My third comment is in section B, on the maximum number of ADUs and JADUs per lot, in section three, it's referring to what has been referred to as the bonus ADU for, so for a property that has at least two acres, an additional ADU would be authorized if it included a deed restriction for low income of what the, what the language says of fifteen years. I think it should say at least fifteen years, and I support that idea. I, I, and I support that idea, because the way that we're gonna qualify under HCD, and that we have certified our housing element under HCD, is very largely based on ADUs. Eighty percent of it is ADUs. I think we have to do whatever we can reasonably do to support that, and I think this is one of them, so that's why I support it.
You're saying four?
Yeah, I, 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 well, with one of them having this deed restriction, and that only being applicable to two or larger acre properties. And I, I, you know, I don't know how often that's gonna be used, honestly. But, uh, my next comment, which is my third comment, is under section H, no, I, which is Heritage Tree Ordinance, I one, I'm very disturbed by the fact that the, uh, state authorizes eight hundred square foot or less ADUs, and that those can be put anywhere on a property, and that that can be used to, uh, eliminate any heritage tree. I'm most disturbed that it can be used to eliminate hundred of year old oak trees. Um, so right now, the language proposed reads, the Heritage Tree Ordinance does not apply to ADUs up to eight hundred square feet. And I would like to add to that language introductory, if and only if required by state law, the Heritage Tree Ordinance will not apply to eight hundred, because I believe at some point, that's gonna be, uh, you know, potentially challenged in state law, and if it no longer applies, I don't wanna have a period where we have to come back and amend our ordinance. Uh, I think we could address that right now. My fourth comment refers to what Carol Flaherty brought up, and a number of people that addressed in terms of the, the fence height. I, I support, uh, both the idea of requiring an eight foot fence uh, anywhere where there's an ADU that's being built with a four foot setback. I think that's a problem. Uh, and I, I like the idea of requiring an eight foot fence, although I do think that it's intelligent that if there's pre-existing uh, screening that is, you know, staff can use to, decide the right language, but that genuinely screens the property next door, that it doesn't require someone to go in and, and build an eight foot fence when they have perfectly good screening and an existing six foot fence, but, but where there is not adequate screening, I think an eight foot fence should be required. And when there's new construction, i- if, if there is an, an ADU going in with the state authorized four foot setback, or there's an ADU going in up on top of a garage, I think the eight foot fence should be required. Maybe that's all. I think that's all my comment.
Before you move on, can we have a comment on Councilmember DeGolio's comments?
I just wanted clarification on the eight foot tall fencing. Um, so an eight foot tall fence for an eight hundred square foot ADU that's four feet, as well as a ten foot setback ADU? I got a little lost at the end there.
I think a ten foot setback ADU, if it's on top of a garage.
Okay.
I think if it's an ADU that's ten feet from the fence, because they're building the ADU at larger than eight hundred feet, so they're complying with our setback, that a six foot fence is fine.
Okay, thank you.
A- and I also agree with the comment that that eight foot fence doesn't have to be on the enti, all four sides of the property. It should be on the, I've, I think you want a whole side to be the same height. You don't want eight feet foot fence for half the fence and then go to six, so for what, for the side that that, uh, you guys can work out the language.
Jason to a neighbor?
And Jason to neighbor.
Yeah, the side that that building faces the neighbor, they, we should protect the neighbors.
But the neighbor should have some input into that. Perhaps they want a declining fence.
Well, if it's, we can't condition an eight hun, that's the comment that I made to you on the phone. We can't condition an eight hundred square foot ADU on a neighbor's consent.
I didn't make that comment.
Oh, I mean, I'm, that's what you and I were talking about on the phone.
I know, but he was mentioning if there's an eight foot fence required, put it on the whole side, and I said it should be conditioned on the neighbor root. Perhaps they want a declining fence to six, so it's not eight feet all the way. That'd be.
How, how do you negotiate that with the neighbor? Is that?
Oh, you say.
Would that work?
That they have to talk to the neighbor.
We, we can't condition an eight hundred square foot ADU on neighbor consent of anything.
I know, I know that. We're not talking about eight hundred.
He's talking about the fence, whether.
Just the fence.
Did I understand you to say?
All ADUs.
Understand, but if, if our requirement is that an eight hundred square foot ADU have an eight foot fence, and we're saying with the condition of approval of the neighbor.
Okay, so exclude eight hundred square feet.
But it's, it's not the eight hundred square foot, it's the four foot setback. That's the, that's the instigating measure.
So, I have a question about the fencing along the front of the property.
Thank you.
What if a property owner wants to put an ADU along the front of the property, snugged up to the side perimeter of a, a neighbor? So either the landscape screening is in effect, um, mature uh, on the side, and you don't have to increase your fence height, but on the front, if you have never had, you know, huge landscape screening or a huge fence, you have to build an eight foot fence, oh, fence along the whole front edge of your property?
If you put a, put it right there four feet from the street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You actually, I believe you can put it on the street.
Correct.
Not four feet.
You can put it right on the property line.
Wait, you can put the house?
There's no four foot setback for a front yard.
You can put it on the front property.
Property line, yes.
By state law?
Yeah.
Oh, shoot.
Yeah.
I don't think anyone's done that yet.
And Menlo Park, Menlo Park, I've seen it. It was, it's awful. It's awful.
Okay, but then you have to build an eight foot fence?
Sure, that's a penalty.
Or landscaping, right? I mean, a, a, a house was just finished across the street from me, and they built their, you know, uh, fence, um, but wooden fence, and then they brought in eight foot high English laurels that were already eight foot high, and planted them all along in front of the fence. So you don't see the fence, and, and it's already, it's like instant landscape screening.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's actually good, and that was one of the questions I had, was whether we can, if it's four feet, you can't put any hedges in it because of fire, is that correct? So you, you can't say, all right, we want people to boot, put some screening, because you could, you could imagine having the fence and then having a tall tree where you have coverage above to get the other twenty-five feet.
I've got landscape screening against my wooden fences.
You're not supposed to. The, according to the fire ordinance, you're not supposed to have anything.
It's an issue of requiring it.
It's what?
It's an issue of the town requiring that you put in landscaping within that area.
Yeah, we can require it.
The fire.
But fire may veto it.
You're saying.
But we can, I, I think we can require it.
Can we legally require it? Where's our attorney? Because that's a big question, because I thought it was a fire law that we can't do it.
I don't think it has been a fire law.
I never heard that, the fire.
The, the fire district may have defensible space requirements.
They, they do, that's.
It's my understanding that we can't require it because of what the fire protection district has told us.
Yep, it's a fire law. So that's a bummer too.
Wait, it's a property by property evaluated issue. They're, they, the fire department, they have to give a permit, right, for every development, so they, they, they have input into what's gonna go on. We can, I, I don't know why we can't, we can require to have certain landscaping, and they can veto it, because they.
Well, well, I, I think where you're kind of heading with the landscaping for structures that are, are not with, for the screening for structures that are four foot from the setback, is that there'd be screening, or there'd be vegetation, or fencing of a certain height, uh, to address the screening requirement. And how they do that, if they get to the fire district, and the district says, sorry, you can't put it into four feet, then they've got another choice to make, eight foot fence, partner with the neighbors, put something on their side, whatever it is, they're obligated to provide screening.
So the landscape requirement that's in here is not proposed to change. It's been, it was already added in twenty twenty, and it is phrased to say landscape screening for the eighty, ADU shall be installed to the greatest extent feasible. So when I read that, I don't necessarily see it as an objective standard. It's squishy. Um, and it would be something that if the fire department said, no, you can't build it, or you can't provide it, then you can't provide it.
That would be a good fire district.
I absolutely, well, two things I wanna commend you on this, trying to address this idea of, of putting an ADU and then killing a tree and then not building it. I love your idea of the penalty and the timeframe. I think that's a good way to attack that problem. The other thing we didn't talk about tonight that I really like is the window standards on garages, and also AD, as much as we can on ADUs that are that close to the fence. I love the fact that you can't have windows, and I, whatever that nice word is for the high windows are.
Clear story.
Yeah, though, all of that was really great, and that's really, to me, if you look at the boxes of what we can control off of your slide, night, all of this, the state's dictating, there's nothing we can do. This is, this is done. We don't even need to discuss it, it's done. But these are the ones we can, and I, 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 I think that you've done some good things there, and the line of sight, to me, this whole line of sight stuff is the biggest thing, because that's the culture of where we live in. You don't wanna have something ruin your line of sight to your neighbors, so the more we can do over here, the best.
Elizabeth, anything else?
Nope, I'm done.
All right, so I'll take a turn now. I, uh, first off, I'm agreeing with, um, with Carol on the, uh, on the bonus unit. I know the bonus unit was a plus, and it's a way for us to get, you know, very lo, low income people in, or requirement to fulfill our requirement, but you know, we, we're having more and more ghost houses in here, and they'll just become major rental problems. And, and, uh, I prefer, you know, if you can get, you know, the number that you can get into for counting the main, main unit today, I think that's enough for a one acre or even a two acre yard, but adding a fifth unit, I, I just don't think fits. And so I'm, I'm against that. I'm for all the glazing on the upper story windows. Um, and depending on the room, along with, depending on fire district, uh, you know, if it's a bedroom, perhaps they have to be openable, but uh, you know, to the maximum extent, then if we're gonna have them glazed, then we should have them so they're not openable. So I, I, I agree with that. I prefer not to have anything in the front yard, but if we are, um, you know, I prefer to have uh, you know, eight foot high English laurels than putting just a wooden fence up. So I, I'd prefer to have, you know, the, the screening, and so I don't agree with putting a fence up if in fact you have the screening already there in place, having, if you're gonna have something that's twenty-five feet tall, and you already have a row of trees and hedges in there, I don't see that, that's, that should be adequate enough, and actually is better looking than looking about at a wooden fence.
Bill, would that be an exception in your mind? Would you have the fence thing, and then if I had the existing stuff, would I apply for an exemption?
No.
Or are we gonna put it right in there?
Yeah, write it in there. Fence or, or adequate existing vegetation.
There wouldn't be any exception process in review of an ADU.
So it has to.
It has to be ministerial, and it has to be objectively stated in the, in the code.
Well, for eight hundred square feet, yes, but for others, we could have the arborists come out and verify.
Well, that would have to be done with this, within a specific timeframe, uh, that's set by the state, uh, and it would, it would have to be in alignment with something that's objectively stated in the code.
Is there a way to objectively state that idea, that it, uh, if you have vegetation that sufficiently blocks, or how do you, is there?
We can craft language around this idea.
In a language that would be considered.
This is a common direction.
Yeah, and that's, that's what we would like to have. I, I see no reason for putting up a wooden fence where there's an eight hundred square foot. And so, uh, I, I agree with your comments, uh, Brittany, and the requirements on the, um, the walkways up to the, uh, internal garage. Um, I know that not everybody on the council was happy about that, but we can work, they can work that out. I didn't understand the no sidewall height limitation applying to the ADUs, but uh, perhaps that's not an issue that I should be concerned about. And that's really about it, because I'm hoping we can be done with this item.
I have one additional comment, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, with respect to the Heritage Tree Ordinance not applying to the eight hundred square foot ADU, I'm always thinking of ways that someone could actually try and game that system. They could go in, they could put in an eight hundred square foot ADU, taking out all the heritage trees, and then six months later, they could enlarge that ADU to twelve hundred square feet, uh, and it's still four feet from the setback.
Right.
How do we prevent that?
Yeah, well, they're also movable, the ones like the adobe and some of those, you can move them, I assume.
Yeah, so, um.
Yeah.
Well, we need to, I think, craft some, something in there.
Yeah, I think we need to have something put in there and highlight it, so we can recognize it next time around.
Yep.
I like the fact that you summarized the things that we could do in, in color, so they were brought to our attention. It'd been nicer if that was part of the staff report, not just bringing it to us here, that's my other comment. Because the staff report was very long, and this is very short. Okay, a lot of reading. Do you have enough, or you want us to vote on specific things without reading the? Con so we can move this thing along or?
I, I think we're, we're, we're clear on the direction, so we would amend it and return it. The question is, do you want to introduce it as amended? Or, or Andreas, are the amendments that they're proposing this evening. Substantial enough that we need to continue the public hearing to January and bring those amendments back?
We should continue.
Okay. I, I think we've got some language that we still need to craft, so I don't think we've been specific enough in, in our edits. That we would be able to go forward with the first reading here, I think. Coming back with those edits for first reading is the, the best approach.
Alright. Okay, then I'm proposing that we continue this item to. A date in January, uh, staff would put that in after they've made the changes for us to have a final review in the public to have. Uh, a good look at it.
January.
All in favor?
I. I second your motion.
Okay. Okay, are we voting?
George, could you clarify that date again in January before we take the vote on this?
January seventeenth.
There you go, okay. So right now there are two eyes and how about down here, three eyes. Rick, for what?
Continuing.
And having staff put in.
Bring it back.
Put for us to look at it again. Yes, okay.
But I think that, uh, we, we really haven't voted on the issue of the ADU. With the two acres or more. There was obviously a disagreement. I, I think that should be included in what you bring back. And then if there's a majority that wants to exclude it, it can be taken out.
I'd like to exclude it.
Right, that, that's our direction.
Okay. Moving on. Um, we already had the advisory.
For eleven, maybe?
Going to number eleven because number ten was done earlier. Conflict, uh, waiver from, uh, Burke Williams and Sorenson. Who's presenting that?
City Attorney.
That, that one will be me.
Okay.
Alright, so this one is a request from Burke Williams Sorenson, which is an outside firm that the. Town contracts with for some labor and employment issues. For a conflict of interest waiver because another attorney at the firm there would like to represent David Arada, the owner of twenty three Oakwood. In, uh, exploring development of that site. And so the request before you basically is to waive the potential for a conflict of interest. From having an attorney from the firm represent a property owner. In a position that's potentially adverse to the town. While someone else from, from the firm also represents the town on labor and employment issues.
So that, that attorney, it'd be a different attorney, there'd be essentially.
Correct, correct. It's two separate attorneys from the firm. They work in different departments at the firm. For context, Burke Williams Sorenson is quite a large law firm here in California. I think they have about a hundred and forty attorneys statewide.
Alright, okay, alright, fine. So are there any questions on this from the council?
I have a question. If you have two attorneys in the same firm. Are they, do they have any protection so that they could share stuff? So if I, if our guy knew stuff, does he have protection to be able to talk to his colleagues? Or do we have any protection from our guy talking to the other guy?
So the, the code of ethics would require them to segregate what they do so that they wouldn't have insider information. They wouldn't be exchanging that. And that's. Common, common practice in, in our profession. That, that's how we do it at Chronic as well.
In our, the attorney that works for us was on labor, not on housing, is that correct? So he's not even.
Yes.
Marya.
Correct. They, they work in totally separate subject areas.
It's what we used to call a Chinese wall.
Right, but I was gonna say that, but I didn't think it was a proper to say that.
We call it a conflict wall these days or conflict screen.
Okay.
Showing your age, Rick.
Uh, that's not.
That's easy to do.
Alright, I, I have a question.
Yeah.
Why would we want to waive the conflict?
Completely at your discretion. Mona and I take no position on whether you should or should not do that.
I know it's, I, I know it's kind of standard practice, you know, all the time I get, you know, I'm in business, I get. Uh, we've never had a lot of litigation ourselves, but we use a lot of attorneys and, you know. A tenant or, you know, a, a client will say, we're gonna use an attorney, um, that. Works in the same business or whatever. And so we, we don't make a big deal about it. But again, we're, we're just never in litigation. I know. Um, it's uncomfortable, I think, uh, given the, um. Complexity of, uh, what we're going through with this particular property. And the housing element and everything else that it's, uh, containing. So I just wonder why. The client, um, chose that particular firm.
Are we at opinions or questions?
Wait, questions, good, exactly right.
Well, they, you asked me.
I, I actually.
She wondered, she was wondering the question. Any other wondering questions?
I have no more wondering questions.
Rick, do you have any wondering questions?
No, I have a comment, but I'll wait.
Okay, how about you?
No, no more questions. That was my question. I asked her.
Alright, public comments.
Thank you, Tom Georgie, four twenty five East Oakwood Boulevard. Um, I think you guys are, have shown that. You're willing to give Mr. Arata twenty acres per, per, uh, twenty units per acre when he asked. And the only check has been ten acres per unit. Um, otherwise you're. I know considering some special zoning arrangement of. Just seems like it's green light all the way. And it's the optics for me that you would let him use the same firm as what the city uses. Uh, so for me, it's an optics issue and I would say, um, don't allow the waiver. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comments? We'll close it, come back to the council. Final comments.
I'll comment.
Go ahead.
I, I don't have a problem with this. They're in two different areas. They're, they are. As, as he said, ethically required to not share the information. All of our information's public anyway. Every single thing we talk about is recorded in public. I, I just think we're adding extra hurdles and I. I just, I don't see the conflict in this conflict. But I do, I do appreciate the optics of it. But the optics is, is just looking at the surface without actually looking at the circumstance.
Okay, Elizabeth, have any further comment on this?
I don't have a comment.
Rick, any further comment on it?
Uh, sure.
By the most qualified.
I'll answer my question. Um, first, I think there is an optical issue here. I, I, I think that the optics, I mean. We approve, we in our housing element have approved one multifamily parcel, right? We're, we're considering more, but we've approved one. And, um, and so the optics aren't good. Uh, I, I, I think that is right. Um, the, but the answer to the question is, we have experience with this law firm, which is our law firm. Uh, and we know they're professional and we have experience with another law firm. Which we've had to deal with in great lengths recently on twenty five Isabella. Which we know is not profession.
Right.
Right.
So the answer to my question would be better to use a, a responsible. You know, well-educated firm that understands municipal law. Than to risk having some wild hair come into the mix. That, that's the answer. I have an optical problem with it.
Optical, okay, alright.
But I think. It, it's typical, it's standard, uh, yeah.
I don't think there's anything unethical about it. Um, it happens all the time. It is just an uncomfortable situation. And that's why I was kind of wondering, but maybe the client didn't realize the potential conflict. When, when to hire this attorney. Or the law firm.
No, 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 the, 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 the law firm.
Knew.
The first thing they do when anybody comes in to hire them is they check and they tell the client. The first thing they do is they tell the client, so.
Yeah.
The client knew it, and it's not an unreasonable request, but, uh, the client knew.
I didn't know that this law firm was a specialist in this area. Um, I know that they were. When I first got on the council, uh, they represented the town as the town attorney, um. Uh, they were replaced by Mr. Connors and then, you know, now we are where we are. Uh, I never really saw them as. Expert in, in this type of law, but, you know, housing law.
Well, we weren't really dealing with it.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. So, yeah. I don't know the reason why they would have selected this firm.
That was my question.
So, okay, excuse me?
He's here, ask him.
Who?
Well, I.
Oh.
Yeah.
I don't see him dying, it doesn't matter.
It's okay.
Oh, there you are, okay. You want to come up and say why you picked this firm? Sorry, you know, I can't see out of this eye.
I didn't really put him on the spot, I'm sorry. I didn't, I was just being.
Yeah.
Question is, how did you come about hiring this firm? Uh, we, we have some consultants and they recommended him. I think I had a meeting with Brittany a couple of months ago and you recommended I get an attorney. Uh, to just kind of go through the fair housing elements. That this thing is generating. So anyway, we found him and then he said that. His, one of his partners did work for the city and so he, uh, put in a request for waiver, so. That's where we are.
To do it, they're legally bound to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be reasonable.
It's totally reasonable.
If we don't use him, we'll just have to find something else.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, uh, then let's take a vote on it. Or do we have a proposal to take? Is there a motion one way or the other?
I don't know. Alright, I will make a motion that we, uh, we accept the waiver. We allow them to use that.
Okay, so there's a motion. Is there a second anywhere?
And so that would include authorizing the mayor to, to sign the conflict waiver just to make sure we. Make the full motion complete with what we, what we're needing to do.
Thank you, yes.
I don't know, I think there's lots of other attorneys and, you know, that are as reputable and that it would just. Um, be probably, uh, a better thing for Mr. Arata, uh, going forward. Um, even though this is kind of done all the time in business. It's just that this is such a heated situation with residents and everything. And I just think that council should take a. You know, a higher, uh, standard here.
Okay, so if there's not a second, then the motion fails. So, uh, I guess we're recommending he find somebody else.
Okay, let's move to the next item.
Okay. Okay, number twelve, receive an update on the status of the town's housing element. And a report on next steps to receive certification. So we should all know this because we've been living it. However, we're willing, hopefully gonna have a short meeting on it, a short discussion. And there should be no surprises.
Brittany Mendix, town planner. Yes, this is a good opportunity for me to just put on paper. All of the items that we have in motion going forward with the housing element right now. It's, the report summarizes three major efforts right now. The first is environmental review. As you'll recall, we had a couple meetings where we talked about the project description. That informs the sequin analysis that's moving forward. That will culminate in an initial study. And that would tell us what the potential impacts from, uh, development consistent with the housing element would look like. And that would be something that informs ultimately what sites you choose moving forward. The second major topic are the updates to the planning code. And really, actually, it's not just the planning code. It could include updates to the general plan. It's effectively all of the documentation and text amendments that will have to happen to align. The town's current regulations and policies with the housing element. And that's actually the item that has the very strict January thirty first, twenty twenty four deadline. Um, so as we discussed earlier tonight, one major component of that is the ADU ordinance. And that's because of a couple items that were already identified earlier tonight in the housing element. That includes the bonus ADU program. It includes the garage, uh, the ADUs and the ADUs located above garages. One thing that didn't get mentioned earlier is that it also, the housing element also identified. The monthly arborist reports as a constraint to development. So that's a check that we can take off there that says we're removing constraints, so that's, that's a benefit. Um. The second part to the updates to the zoning code are the discussions that we're having on multifamily house. Uh, multifamily housing design and development standards. As Mayor Whitmer mentioned, we had a community outreach meeting earlier, um, earlier this week. Wow, I already forgot, Monday.
Monday.
Um, it was Monday night, um. Because the joint study session with the city council and the planning commission, uh, didn't really complete itself. And we'll be revisiting that on November twenty seventh. Uh, the workshop really focused on reha- uh, revisiting topics that were raised in community workshop number one. FAR lot coverage setbacks, this notion of a large house typology and how we might make that work with multifamily. So what you can expect, uh, the study session on the twenty seventh is a summary of how that went. Um, some additional thoughts in terms of staff's recommendations in those areas. Uh, but we're otherwise looking forward to moving on with that conversation and getting to actually drafting some standards that. The public and decision makers can react to. The third item is the inclusionary housing ordinance and fee. And that is another study that's currently underway. It wa- the. Inclusionary housing study looks at what the right thresholds for an inclusionary program would be. So that gets to the percentage of affordable units or the actual fee itself and what that should be set at. Um, so what we're seeing is that all of these items, including other text amendments that are more. Kind of the low hanging fruit from HCD's comment letter when you look at this holistically. All of these comments in this work is gonna come together in January. Um, in an effort to meet the January thirty first deadline. I think it's been acknowledged here, um. That we, if we miss that deadline, we aren't good company, but what's important is that we continually striving diligently to work towards. Getting a certified housing element. And so these are the steps that we need to take to do that. I am available for any questions if you have them. Thank you.
I thought that the presentation on Monday where you took the, the lot, although there was some discussion on. He took just a standard size square lot, but. Uh, with the building of the house from there and then looking at different options was very good and hopefully. Um, we should continue that whenever we're having those type of discussions, both there with the citizens as well as. Uh, here at the council, because it makes it very easy to see, but I thought that it was a well-run meeting. Wanted to give you a compliment on that. Are there any questions on the schedule? Because I know we all read it. I see none. Are there any questions from the audience? Or online? Okay, we'll close public comment. Uh, this is just to receive, so any final comments on this? Okay. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is item number thirteen. Discussion of a Center for Age Friendly Excellence, uh, focus group and task force. Uh, and look at the results from our task force and, uh, do we want to. Make an application to AARP to have a so designated as a age-friendly city? Or do we think we've done enough with some recommendations to ensure we communicate better on. Alternatives for aging population. So with that, I will turn that over to Anthony, since he was the one who sat in on all those meetings.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, so as you seen with the staff report, we held a task force, we had council liaisons. And the task force helped recruit, uh, members of the residents of the age fifty-five and plus commu- community that participated in a series of focus groups. Uh, they also engaged our law enforcement contingent and received some comments from Menlo Park Fire Protection District. All of which were included in the recommendations. We also have Cynthia Nakayama from the Center for Age Friendly of Excellence. Here to answer questions related to the process, next steps, um, um, and outcomes of, of the results that we received. Council members, that Lewis and Hawkins-Benwellan were the standing committee members and can probably speak to some of the outcomes. And the conversations related to the task force, and we have a few of the task force members, I believe in the audience. Who also submitted some public comments related to what we received. Um, in all, there were three different focus groups held that included the task force. And a series of about three different meetings with the council liaisons and the task form, that task force members. The staff report included a series of recommendations, it was not indic- to demonstrate that those were voted on or agreed upon recommendations. It was a culmination of all the information and all the data that was gathered from those different task force, uh, members and the focus groups. And ultimately, it seems like the group of people that participated in these, um, community meetings and community focus group information. They want more information and they wanna make sure that their needs and their unmet needs are adequately addressed. And it was also determined that the council, the staff, I should say, believe that many of the recommendations that were put forward. Could probably be accomplished by partnering with regional, local agencies that already are in the business of providing a variety of these services. And the town might take a, a position in helping steer our residents to adequately, uh, addressing those needs by. Introducing them to some of those, those agencies. We can use a variety of conduits like the library, our website and other, um, town-related outreach and marketing material to get that information out. Um, but there were other suggestions and recommendations included in the report, um, such as creating more. Intergenerational types of activities, so if we have a holiday event, don't just gear it towards families with kids. But make sure that it's more inclusive so that we can, you know, be, um, adequately supporting our, our fifty-five plus community. Um, and with that, you know, you do have all the recommendations, the summary within the staff report is an attachment. I'm here for questions as well as, uh, Cynthia, she may wanna address the council and some of the next steps that, um, maybe, may be available to us.
Okay, are there any questions on this? Oh, you wanna say something?
Yeah.
Sure, I thank you for the time, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members and, um, City Manager, Patrick. And Anthony, um, thank you so much for your time and your, um. Participation as standing committee members, really appreciate all the input. Uh, I think that a lot of time and effort was put into this, um, project. And as Anthony mentioned, there were, there were about seven subcategories that came out of. The overarching eight domains of livability, um, through the World Health Organization and AARP. So, I think there are a lot of benefits that come out of being a part of the certified network. Of states and communities, and I also feel that. The submission of an application was included on every agenda that was publicized as well as. And whenever there were minutes that they were, there was no comments made. So, I don't think that application was ever not mentioned. It was mentioned from the presentation at the beginning to the city council, it was mentioned at the preliminary meeting. With the subcommittee liaison, um, as well as every task force meeting. And part of our contract with San Mateo County is to complete that part of it. The city becomes certified, so we are required to have eight cities certified as age-friendly under this. States of, states and communities by December thirty-one, which is why I've always been emphasizing a November. Submission date of the application, this is not something that I suddenly brought up. Um, I just wanna emphasize that because I, I don't want it to be looked at as something I surprised everybody with. We have also worked with thirty-one total communities. Fifteen in San Mateo County were certified under the guidance of CAFE. And fifteen under San, Santa Clara County have been certified under CAFE. As well as the entire county of Santa Clara County. We have had three contracts under San Mateo County because of our past successes with the last three. We've always been on time and on budget, and in fact, we have always been early. So this is our fourth contract under the county and we really look forward to having. A continuing, continued excellent reputation with the county as we have in the past. So my, I, I, I am hoping that you go forward with the application because of that. Because it will affect our entire staff and our team on this project. Do you have any questions?
Well, we're gonna go on to that, but thank you for the introduction. Okay, uh, why don't we start with Elizabeth?
No, she has her.
I actually have questions. Anthony, can both of you outline the pros and cons, like, I don't understand why we wouldn't apply because. From my understanding, the application is very minimal. And once we've done it, we are not obligated to do anything beyond that, is my understanding. So can someone articulate for me the pro, like, why should we do it, what do we get out of doing it? Other than that, as she pointed out, we did commit to it, so what do we get out of it and versus what is, why would we not wanna do it?
Do you wanna take a first step at that?
Sure, there's some very clear reasons why we would want to go for, or you would want to go forward with it. One is that you have a very high older adult population, it's twenty-four percent, which is very high throughout the county. And so your older adult membership residents want to be heard. They want their needs to be acknowledged, especially because this is a growing demographic. Becoming age-friendly certified would show them, you would demonstrate your intention to include. The older adults in the town's strategic planning. In addition, a very recent surgeon general's report emphasizes the epidemic of loneliness. It came out in several focus groups that the neighborhood structure here in Atherton. Kind of promotes and creates more isolation, it's very difficult at many different generations, not only the older adults. That it is very difficult to meet each other, many don't even meet each other after decades. Unless they happen to be on a committee together and then they exchange information. One benefit to this is that one neighbor mentioned that. Only because he knew he had met his neighbor, that during a recent disaster. He knew that this neighbor had medical equipment that needed power. And because of this, he was able to bring his generator over. And so that her medical equipment could keep going, I think that's a, a strong example of. What's important about this social capital, that I think age-friendly cities do promote. In addition, um. The chief, felt police chief, educated us very well during the, a couple of focus groups. That the fire and police department cannot, the first responders cannot get to everybody. Usually the first week, so you have to be prepared ahead of time, you have to be prepared for an entire week. In order to make sure that you'll be okay, they can't respond. So the edge filler efforts have, have helped to brought, bring these out. Also. The information and the reports that we've been able to provide to you, provide it to you in writing, you see what people have already talked about. You can modify this over time, and if you have a structure. It will, it will ensure that older adults are kept at top of mind. There are so many emergencies that come up, especially now, they're, they come up in more frequency, however. We don't want those to take priority over the focus on older adults, which are growing at a rapid rate. Throughout the world. Your other, your other benefits are, are that this is a national network. You can benefit from not just your local neighbors. Of, or other cities, you can collaborate with them to think of more ideas on how you can improve things for your older adults. But this is national and global, and throughout the, throughout the world, there are one thousand four hundred forty-five. Communities that are age-friendly, within this, almost eight hundred of those are nationwide. So it's a, a pretty vast network and the ideas that come out of this. Can help you to think through even if you don't use them.
Okay, thanks.
Could I just add a couple of things, um, just to speak specifically to your question? I know that there are opportunities to partner with other age-friendly cities to gather additional resources and information. It's one pro for sure that could come out of an application, I can't be certain if this is a pro or a con, but. By submitting an application, we are committing to putting together an action plan. That action plan can be done in-house, but we can also consider contracting with someone else to help assist us with, yes, please.
But when you say the action plan, because I sat in on this and everything that came out of it was great. And I hope that the people that are involved continue, but the action plan doesn't, can be literally what you wrote. We're gonna do and, and then we're just, that's the action plan, we're gonna add, you know, resources, we're gonna host. Once a year, we'll pick like one or two of those that we are already gonna do, I hope we actually do them.
I think your perspective is accurate that.
Hire someone or commit a huge amount of money to do any big thing, right?
Certainly can do it in-house, we probably would need to revise it a bit, I haven't seen samples of what other cities have done. But we certainly can probably do some of that in-house. There are other small commitments that I think we're saying we're gonna move forward with if we submit an application. Like annual reports to the AARP WHO contingent, um, and Cynthia's been direct saying. There is no repercussion if we delay that or we decide not to do it, however, by moving forward with an application, we are saying that that's a part of our plan. Which would involve some staff resources, staff energy, staff direction, um, another small component is. I don't think any resident at this point relies on the town to provide information or guidance on this type of program, pro- programmatic need. And if we make that something that the town does, we will then say, hey, come to the town, come and get this information. It will, we will become a resource for that, and I can't say if that's an advantage or a disadvantage, but. That will certainly then take some staff time, energy and resources to, to manage that.
So there's, are there fees beyond just staff time or?
Not that I've antici- not, not that I can anticipate at this point.
There will be costs related to contracting with outside, with an outside consultant.
I don't see why we need that, though, that's not.
I'm just saying, it's here in the staff report.
But, but any programmatic things within our action plan.
Right.
Would have to come before the council was budgetary item, if we're adding, for example, gonna assist with the library, that could come out of the library fund. So that's a good source for funding library programs and services, but if it were town-related, it would be the town budget that would have to pay for that.
But a lot of this stuff, as you pointed out rightly, when I, I read the report. There's the little house here, it's two blocks away. It's also out of the little house. Uh, there's senior centers, Menlo Park as well as Redwood City. Lots of the communications, uh, you know, transportation stuff is county-funded. So for example, yes, there's a, a Menlo Park bus that rides around town. It rides right through Atherton and I've spoken to the people there because it's funded by, uh, commute.org. And they said, if you guys wanted to stop somewhere in Atherton, all you gotta do is ask. You know, I don't think we need to have, you know, a committee and be committed to be a age-friendly city when we can do it ourselves. I agree with the fact that, of the stuff that's written here. Maybe somebody moving to town or somebody that's been isolated for a long time, they don't know what's available. We can put that information on our website, we could put it at the library, we could send out mailers to people on it. Um, but, you know, I, I don't think there's a whole lot of special stuff that we need to do. Other than just document what's here.
Well, that we agree, we're not proposing that we start a whole senior sentence or we do anything. But there is a need, I can tell you that the people don't know about all that stuff and other cities do require it and other cities. You know, Menlo Park publishes a thing that tells you all those resources, we're not saying make new resources, we're just saying. Get the information to our people.
Athertonian thing.
Right, those are all the actions.
Things about, you know, having ADAP go visit people, that's great, you're already doing some of that.
Yeah, I think we're, I think it, we're not su- suggesting anything other than what we probably should or would do anyway. So the actions are not building a new thing, we're not pro- providing any new facilities. With a few exceptions, having sat in on this, one of the suggestion that came out in many of them is a need for. You know, seniors to wanna do stuff at the library and learn about tech or tech support, that came out every single time. And that's a valuable thing, so that's one, one conversation with our, all of it's like very.
Library offers age-friendly learning how to use computers, they offer that.
Right, so we just publicize.
So if you didn't, if you knew that we had to ask the library to do it, then you didn't know about it, okay? So the, the library needs to do a better job, which I've said several times, of publicizing the type of programs they have. And perhaps putting them in Anthony's newsletter.
Perhaps I could, uh, interject here, I think weaving some of the activities and recommendations and services and, and program referrals even. That are listed in the staff report, I think that's gonna become a matter of course. Going forward and we're gonna bring those things up as part of the budget processes need, we'll talk to the library and do those sorts of things. I think the crux of the question is, do we want to file an application with WHO and AARP? That's what we're asking for a basic direction for this evening.
Did we sign a contract?
The measure cake money that comes from the county is specifically for that, the purpose. Specifically for the purpose of creating an age-friendly city.
Are we doing questions or?
No, we're doing comments now.
Elizabeth was saying something, if we would please let her say it.
Well, I, I just, uh, the, um, the question that I have is, uh, in order to do this. You're saying that, are you, are you saying that we have to sign up and file. Uh, an application to AARP, which is a publication that. Has nothing to do with Atherton, it's nationwide. And once you get your name and your city involved in AARP, well, you're, that's what you're asking us to do. Yes?
That's what our contract requires.
Yes, and, yes.
This is, and it's.
That's, that's your contract, that's not mine, okay?
We've worked with thirty-one communities and no one has misunderstood that. So I guess I, I am surprised that.
Yeah.
This is happening right now, so.
Why do you think it's a bad thing?
Well, I can't answer that because we're into questions.
You guys answered, my, my question was, is the committee recommending and it sounds like it's not.
We're not agreeing, I, it sounds like.
Okay.
The committee didn't.
I have, I have second actual question. Did the committee, this is a committee report, did the committee ever discuss the concept of. A seniors fitness, something at, uh.
No.
Brook Palmer Park and I bring, I bring, wait, the question is, did you guys ever discuss that? And, and, and I have that question because it did come up at Park and Rec a couple times.
We did discuss it there. There was an interest in that. And in fact, that made it into, you know, the things.
But it's not in this report.
It's, it's listed as a general recommendation.
There's a lot of recommendations.
There was a very specific one.
There's, there's some, there's, this is, there's more report than this. This is the only report I, that I'm aware of seeing from.
Oh, the staff report has like seven or eight pages.
It's not a staff report. This is a committee report.
Okay, well, there's, there's seven or eight pages to it.
There was a report written.
No, it was 19 pages. I've got 19 pages.
Okay, sorry, 19.
That was resulted.
This is your, this is from your committee, am I wrong?
No, it's from Anthony.
Okay.
From Anthony, yeah. There, there was a report that came out of the actual focus groups, which was the results of the focus groups. So that's written a different report. And I believe it was attached, but I don't know. It isn't attached.
There, there is, there is something attached to this.
Yeah, so that was the actual results of the study. And, uh, and just, I mean, to back up for a minute, the experience of doing this was good. I think a lot of great stuff came out of it. I hope the group stays together and goes forward. And I hope we do commit to do many of the things that we came out with. And I think we will. So that's why I, I'm wondering what the, you know, I, I was not, I was being sincere when I was asking, what's the benefit? Why is it a bad thing to sign the contract and to have where? Cause that's a, that's a feather in our cap to be a senior friendly city in my view.
Yeah, but I have an answer why.
Okay.
That's not being answered to you, but if we're into discussions right now, okay? The reason I would not want to fill out an application and file it with AARP. And one of our other, uh, committee members, when she heard that at the very last meeting that we were at, that this was brought up. And the only reason that it's being, being brought up, even though you say it was in all of the other stuff that we had to do, but we had to, in order for them, for, for Cafe to complete their contract with the county, they have to have us file an application with AARP and WHO. And now we then are now on this national register. And this other committee member goes, I wouldn't do that. Well, what about this? And she named another senior, uh, magazine, uh, that's sort of like AARP. That is like maybe on the other side of the political aisle.
I need this, yeah.
And, and, you know, and I'm not gonna sign that. I'm not gonna, this is, we've kind of felt a little hoodwinked, I have to say. But the, but, and the reason I would not want to do this is because then we're listed. If you ever look at an AARP, AARP magazine, you get it? Do you read it? You see that all the names of the towns across the country and stuff. And then we're just, you know, we're part of this national organization where we don't really need to be. Our seniors, we, we're not a big town. Um, and, uh, the services, I mean, we're gonna meet with Peninsula Volunteer Representative, uh, next week. Um, uh, to come and talk to us about, um, how Peninsula Volunteers help our seniors already and how they can do more. In fact, if you go over to Little House Peninsula Volunteers, the name on the building is the Rosener House and it's Rosalie, uh, Morris. It's named after Merv Morris's wife. Jeff Morris was here. They started it. All of the, it's like Little House was built up and Peninsula Volunteers was built up by Atherton residents. Sandy Ferrando started Meals on Wheels, you know, years ago. So we're already invested and involved in this organization. We don't need to kind of recreate the wheel here in Atherton.
Nobody's talking about recreating the wheels. We're all, we're, we're talking about the same thing and then we're jumping in logic.
Except for making application and joining AARP and WHO so they can complete their contract.
But why did we agree to do this in the first, did we sign a contract, George?
No. Contract, it's the contract between Cafe and the county. So we don't have a separate contract with any of the other cities.
No, but unless we sign up for AARP, you don't get your contract finished.
AARP, first of all, I, I don't think of AARP as being a political organization. That's, uh, you know, I, I, I see someone over there saying it is, but I, I don't see that as being a political organization. And to me, being, uh, being certified as a friendly city is a feather in our hat. It's not a negative thing.
I think what we did for, uh, the, the housing element, we did all the right things. We checked all the little right boxes. We held, uh, outreach to seniors. We, uh, had committee, uh, meetings on this, um, process, which is what, um, HCD kind of wants us to have done. And so we've really checked all the boxes and I think that's why we entered into doing this in the beginning. But I don't want to have my back put against the wall to.
Yeah, that won't happen.
To, to, to be certified.
Answer on question issue.
Yeah. What?
And are we having, can we have a discussion? I have a comment.
Well, I asked if we could have a discussion. She says, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I know, but.
Okay, let Rick have conversation and then somebody can make a proposal of which way they wanna go. And we can vote on it and be done with it.
So I, I, my first question is, is this report a report out of committee from the council's subcommittee? Or is this a report about a company called Center for Age Friendly Excellence?
There's, the last four pages of the staff report are the standing committee and task force recommendations.
The last four pages, wait, say that again.
The last four pages of your packet.
Yeah, so it's, it's included as one of the attachments.
Starting on page 16.
Wait, starting on page 16?
16, 17, 18 and 19.
Ken, if you could just wait to make your public comment, that would be appreciated.
There, there was a study report that was produced that was a result of the actual study. That then went to staff and staff then distilled that into a set of recommendations of what we could do. So that's kind of what, what you got. So you, you got the staff recommendation and then you have the.
I didn't see a recommendation. And the, all the, from, from the staff, what I saw was it is recommended that the council discuss.
Well, there were two attachments, I guess then.
So what, what I'm reading is it's recommended that we discuss the Center for Age Friendly Excellence's standing committee recommendations. But it doesn't sound like you have any recommendations.
Well, see, now what we're discussing is whether we're gonna sign the thing or not. So we hop back and forth between discussing what the results of the study were versus deciding if we're gonna sign this agreement or not. And I, I would be curious what, how we got into the agreement, because it's, it feels unethical to agree to do this, spend all the time and then not do it. But, um, but I don't know. I don't know what the, I wasn't part of the original discussions of what we.
It was a letter of commitment on behalf of the town executed by the mayor, reviewed by the city council report went out. Uh, and it was committing us to do certain things, one of which was to host community forums, senior task force, put together a group in the community, talk about senior issues, unmet needs. That's what, uh, council member Louis is talking about as the benefit to our housing element was we're doing all of those things. We're engaging that segment of the population. It feeds into our housing element needs. So it was a good thing and the council thought it was a good thing to do. At the end of it, it also talked about filing an application with WHO and AARP as part of the county's program. That's the measure K grant part.
If we chose.
There's not a recommendation to do that.
Not from staff, but.
Not from the committee.
And not from the committee, clearly. The standing committee of the council, the task force, the, of the resident group, they may have a different perspective and may not have even provided a recommendation on it.
And there wasn't a consensus from.
There was no consensus, but you have a council subcommittee.
So there's a third group, there's a task force?
Of residents that were engaged.
Nothing to do with the standing committee?
They were partnered with the standing committee, because the standing committee was open and public noticed. And so seniors participated in it. That's the task force part. And then the council subcommittee, council member, or vice mayor Hawkins-Manwellian and council member Lewis are here tonight to provide their perspectives as well.
All right.
So in that original letter, is there a discussion? What, can you give me what the words were about the, about the commitment to?
It was an if we choose to.
If we choose to is what it said.
Well, you always have the choice. It may not have said that in the letter, but as a council, this is your policy choice.
So. So if Rick could finish and then let's let Ken say something, because he's jumping up and down.
So I, I, I think that, um, it's really important that we have a age-friendly excellence standing committee. I appreciate that both of you have put time on it and are working on. I think it's really important for Atherton to have that. Um, I've read through this report. It, I didn't see any recommendations, so that was very confusing to me. Uh, although the, it, what, the, the, uh, the staff report is started with, it's recommended that the council review. So the standing committee recommendation. So I get review what's here, but I didn't see any actual recommendations. I do think, and, and from, it's not, so it's not a hundred percent clear to me what comes from the standing committee and what comes from the task force and what comes from this other cafe organization. But one of the bullet points suggests, under potential initiatives, develop a quarterly or biannual senior hosted town event to engage residents and connect them to service providers and programs, specifically meeting their meaning seniors' needs. I think that's really good. I don't think that doing it quarterly makes any sense. I'd rather do, you know, start with one and see how it goes. And, um, then go on. Uh, but, um, that, that's all. And I, I'm happy to take the committee's recommendations on any action.
Well, I guess there's, what's getting confused in this conversation? There's the things of what we would like to do out of it, but what we're actually voting on tonight is whether we sign this agreement or not. That's, that's how this, this discussion's framed. We're not voting on which of these initiatives to do.
But is that correct? The only party that's recommend, I mean, that's actually asking us to do that is this organization Cafe. It's not being asked, recommended by the committee. It's not being recommended by staff.
No.
To move forward with the application.
By an outside organization.
Now, just wondering who started this whole thing.
We worked with.
And they have a contract, they have a contract. They have a contract with the county that stipulates that they have to
Get so many people.
Get so many people signed up to AARP and to WHO certified.
But we took up all of her time. So this is the ethical decision we need to discuss.
It's not ethical, it's not unethical. Diana, it's not unethical to not do it.
The money, the money was allocated.
Not, that's not.
Not for task force, not for the focus group.
No.
You don't have the floor.
It was for the certification.
Ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Can you hold on for a couple of minutes? Thank you. Go ahead with your comment.
I just wanna understand how we got in this situation in the first place, because we agreed to do it. She spent all this time.
We agreed to listen and set up a committee and take input from those and then have the council.
But we used her organizations to run the focus groups.
That's what they said that they were offering us. For free.
Did nobody who committed to this read the fine print and saw what we were committed to until now?
They said at the end, they were gonna ask us if we wanted to sign up.
Do, do you think we should?
Oh, here's the letter. Wait.
You know what? I don't know. I, I'm saying that I think we should.
It was brought forward to the council.
I feel it's a little bit unethical to sign an agreement with people, spend all the hours she spent.
This is a letter from us?
Sign an agreement.
We had a letter of intent, I guess. That's what he was reading. There's the letter above us.
Can't make it go down. Where's the letterhead?
So this is the letter. Now, I, I wasn't alerted to this, so we, this kind of just happened, so.
Yeah, I, I, I don't recall this letter. Did I sign it?
Well, it's signed by Anthony in my name.
Well. Offer this letter in support of our application of the AARP network. I don't think that, I mean, I, I'm not gonna agree to it.
Well, you didn't wanna do it in the first place, but once we committed to it, we should, we should, we should go with open eyes what we're committing to do.
We did, and we had a committee and they came up with good recommendations and we can follow through with them on our own. And Ken would like to say something, so if I could let Ken now have the floor. Come on.
Late. So I will cut to the chase. Um, let me see if I can get the definitions right. The town standing committee are Elizabeth. And Diana, okay.
Elizabeth.
That's the standing committee, wouldn't have a say in it. There was a, there were two focus groups. One task force.
Three focus groups.
There, that was there, okay. So there were five members of the task force, of which I'm one. Two of the others were here, gonna come tonight, but they both are ill unfortunately. What I'm gonna tell you is my view of how the task force feels. I can only represent myself at the moment, because we tried to get the task force together to actually write recommendations and vote on them. But we couldn't get it done. I think we should get it done.
You couldn't get it done because you didn't have a meeting or you, you couldn't get agreement?
We could have gotten agreement, we never had the meeting.
Yeah, there should have been one more meeting that we didn't have. I totally agree with you, should have been one more to close it.
We can only tell you that's what we recommended and it never happened.
Yep, I agree with that.
And so I'm gonna tell you what I think we would vote for. Um, but I personally think we should have another meeting and give you guys recommendations to come out of it. Okay, that's, that would be my view. Uh, first of all, however, the first thing is we gotta thank you guys and Cafe for getting this kicked off. Because what I did discover is Diana said, there's a lot of interest in people that just don't know what's going on out there that need help. But, but they just don't know it because there's no communication with them. But as Bill points out.
That's right.
Just, there's 99% what you need is there. We just gotta get communicated together. Um, so I will tell you what I think those recommendations would be. I think we should get the people together and confirm them or change them. But first of all, one is that we should create a, 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 a senior committee similar to the, to the Atherton Shree Committee. So it's not a, it's not a, it's not an official committee. It's a volunteer, what do you call that committee? It's a advisory? Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
Where, and there's enough enthusiasm and you saw it from the people that were there, that they would jump in and run with it. And the thing we don't wanna do is stifle the seniors who are interested in doing this. I mean, there's a lot of enthusiasm out there at, uh, right now. So we should, and I think we can get that, we can harness that and get our own people to do the work. And, and collect all the information that Bill knows about and Elizabeth knows about and, and exchange the information. So that was the first idea is we should push for such an advisory committee. Second of all, we talked a little about the library. We talked to Christine about this and the library manager about potentially having a very start, start early. Just a small little cubicle in the library with the information all there. And then learn what we can, add more to it, grow it, see what happens step by step. Don't rush into something big, just get something started. Basically a place, if you wanna, you know, wanna look for resources, here's a spot in the library to go to. Um, thirdly, and this is, this goes back to the exercise thing. Uh, I do, I'm a big supporter and I think the people in the, in the, in the focus groups, in the, in the task force are also big supporters of having some senior balance exercise strength thing available in the new, new playground. Uh, for a couple of reasons, not only for individuals, but as you may know, a lot of people now are getting together in those kind of four or five person exercise groups. If you can do that in the playground together, it'd be a wonderful, uh, socializing thing. But again, not saying it should be done, but saying that should be part of the, part of the scope of our park committee. Park and Rec gotta be, look at, look at all the options. Pick the ones that are right, but look at them all. And lastly, I'll be careful about this, because I don't, to say it clearly. Nobody that I know on that task force or other senior I've talked to in the residence has any desire to turn to, to become a certified city to, to ARPA or, uh, who, that they see no value in that. In fact, if anything, they do not want us to be listed anywhere for all the reasons that Atherton, that's, we're Atherton. We don't need that. We don't want it. No reason, we are a senior friendly committee or, or town already. And to have it posted somewhere, who cares? Uh, to see no value to that whatsoever. Uh, and the, because, and again, it'll take some time and effort of our staff and everybody else, why do it? Lastly, um, I gotta be careful, I think this is true. Uh, Cafe started in, started in Santa Clara County. Right? For other reasons, I've been dealing with, uh, not, not a Biden, a Brown act in any fashion whatsoever. I've been dealing with, uh, residents who are, who are the town councils or on committees in other towns. Uh, basically in some other. or on committees in other towns, uh, basically in some other, uh, at a club, the organization. And I've asked them, and it turns out, as you may know, uh, Palo Alto looked at this, San, um, Los Altos, Los Altos Hills, all three of them had decided no. Uh, and went through, one of them
If they decided not to do the, did they do the whole study and then decide not to?
Um, and again, went back and said, we don't need this. In fact, Los Altos, Los Altos Hills have an interesting idea. They each have their own senior kind of voluntary committee. And they get together. So kind of once every few months, the Los Altos Hills and Los Altos residents on the other committees get together and talk about each other. I think that's the real, the real benefit here. We should be getting our towns and the seniors to talk to each other that way.
Right.
Do it locally. This is a local thing. This is not an international WHO organization. Who cares? Anyway, so out of this, my recommendation is, we gotta get task force together. Write up, write up our recommendations, vote on them, and hand them back to you. Is that fair? And I'd just like to note that the three proposed solutions that Ken came up with, um, were all included in the staff report. Oh, no, they're all in there. They're all included. They're all in there. There's just so many of them.
Yeah.
You gotta go figure. And so that was the goal, putting forward everything that came out of the information. Give it to council for consideration, and then you can provide direction at some point about what you want to move forward. Our only difference is, we, someone needs to set a priority in those things.
Yeah.
And I don't think they should be doing it on their own. They should get from people going to work.
Agreed.
Anyway, thanks.
Alright, okay. So is there, wanna be a recommendation, um, moving forward here?
I recommend that we have the, our council committee meet with the task force again, so that the members of the task force can come together and have them actually make a recommendation to us. I think, I think it's an important overall effort to focus on seniors in our town and.
Yeah, I agree with that. But I thought, I heard from Ken that they're not recommending that we sign up with the cafe.
We don't need to do that now. They, if they come back with a recommendation to do that, I, I'm, I mean, I don't have a pro, I don't, I don't know what the issues are, but let's, I'd rather have our, our subcommittee make a re- actual recommendation to us.
Alright, for you?
I agree with everything that Ken said. I felt that we stopped one meeting short of coming to resolution. I really would love to have that resident committee go forward and do some of the stuff and some of it is low hanging fruit. I personally think this was very sloppily handled, where we would commit to an outside group and have them spend the number of hours that they did. She wrote a whole report. She, she, you know, ran the focus groups and then at the end, we didn't do what was kind of implied that, what we were gonna do from the beginning. So would I, did I know that we applied that? But I think it was very sloppy and I think it is not good form for us to have not known that going into it. And if this is what we're gonna do, it was kind of mean, I thought. So.
Next.
Um, I have no problem, uh, getting the task force together. I didn't realize, I think I was out of, you know, I had to take a trip, uh, when it was the end. And, um, and there was some sense of urgency, uh, from the cafe, uh, you know? And there was a lot of pressure being put on, uh, the, the members of the committee, the, the one meeting that I, uh, the last meeting that I attended, uh, to sign up for AARP, which was a real surprise. Really, to me, uh, number one.
You hadn't seen this letter?
No, uh-uh, no. And to the other committee members.
Well, the letter doesn't commit that we're gonna do it.
No, the letter does. Offer this letter in support of our application to AARP.
I know. We committed to do it and we're, and we're backing out of it. Now, none of us were aware of it, but, but there it is, and it's a little bit unethical.
But, but, but when, when she brought it up, she says, well, you're not really obligated to, to, to sign up, but.
This is a letter that commits the town to something. I think the council to something that the council never even was aware of.
No.
When we, when we talked to her, it was not clear that we had to become a member of CAFE and pay an ongoing fee to a consultant to be listed.
Well, we, we don't have to do that.
We don't have to pay anybody.
That CAFE made it work out. The council committed at that point to issue this letter.
Well.
So this was, this was before the couns, this letter came before the council.
I, I don't think it was really clear, because the, the presentation.
Whatever. I mean, it sounds now like there's consensus that we should have another meeting.
But that's on the other topic. What's the consensus on this topic?
Well, I, I leave it up to the, that, it, I, the, some, from, from my, how I feel about it is, if the subcommittee wants to recommend that, let the subcommittee recommend that. If the subcommittee doesn't recommend that, then we're not gonna get a recommendation. If, if staff wants to recommend, staff can recommend it, or if CAFE wants to make a outside proposal to us to do it, then we can consider it. But right now, there's
You're okay with having a letter signed by the city that?
Not particularly, but we do. I mean, that's done. There's nothing we can do about that now.
That was after the council agreed to do it.
I'm not gonna agree to it just based on that letter.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not either. And in fact, to be honest, I wasn't crazy about bringing it to the council. Only because it was mentioned by the city manager that this would enhance our, our application to the housing.
Well, let me just say.
Good for us to have this committee.
It's a stinking good thing. Twenty percent of our people are seniors. There is a need for all of this.
Yes.
Other cities publish.
We don't have to be part. But we don't have to be part of a commit, of a
That's true.
Of a, of a nationwide
But we shouldn't.
Organization and, 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 and have a financial commitment.
Really kind of irritates me, number one, is that I feel it was a little bait and switch that, you know, in support of AARP and the, uh, WHO. But the real trick is, and is that if, if we don't do it, she doesn't get her contract ratified, you know, and she won't get her money. Yeah, that bothers me. She needed eight, eight members from.
How many does she have?
Well, she needs from, from San Mateo County.
So there's sixteen or so.
Yeah, so.
Does she have?
I don't know. I don't know. But it seemed like she really needed us. And then that, that just made me feel, well, gosh, my back's against the wall here. I didn't even know about that.
So can I just, so the council direction is that we're gonna pull the standing committee back together, invite the task force members back to, uh, hold another standing committee meeting. Um, but you're not moving forward with support for an application at this stage?
At this stage, no. We're not doing anything.
Okay.
Other than that, we're authorizing to have another meeting of our citizen group.
Okay.
Alright. Uh, are there any council reports or comments? Seeing none. Any future agenda items?
Seeing none. Four hours is too long.
Well, I do too, but we spent a lot of time on a lot of things that. Meeting's adjourned at ten o'clock. You, you wanna know something?